It being 6:03 on Tuesday, April 23rd, 2024, I'm calling this Board of Selectmen meeting to order, and we'll begin with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This meeting is being recorded by the local scene. Anyone intending to make an audio or video recording of this meeting should notify us at this time. Financial assistance applications are available on the town's website or by contacting the Selectmen's office. The Agricultural Commission will be sponsoring a presentation on Blue Stern Natives, scheduled to take place at the Senior Center on Tuesday, April 30th, at 7:00 p.m. On a related note, between May 14th and May 28th, residents can order native plants on bluestemnatives.com, and orders can be picked up at the Highway Barn on Saturday, June 1st. For more information, please visit the town's website at kingstonma.gov. On Thursday, April 25th, the Kingston Public Library is hosting an interest group at the Archives at 7:00 p.m. For more information, please visit the library's webpage within the town's website. The parking lot at the Adena remains closed for the reconstruction of the boat ramp, but it's due to reopen for the boating season on May 1st, as far as I know. Okay, yes. Kingston Farmer's Market begins its 2024 season on May 5th, this couple Sundays from now, I guess. From 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at Grace Beach, the Farmer's Markets will run the first Sunday of each month through October. Annual Town Meeting is Saturday, May 11th, and the Annual Town Election will be Saturday, May 18th, the following Saturday. As a reminder, the last day to register to vote in the local election is Wednesday, May 8th. And June will be here before we know it, so it is fiscal year 25 Recycling and Disposal Center sticker time, so also known as dump stickers, for those of us who call it the dump. So they will be on sale at the Highway Department window, which is right behind the townhouse, Monday through Friday, 7:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., starting on June 1st, with weekend sticker sales starting on June 22nd through July 14th, from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., excluding holidays. Okay, on August 23rd of this past year, this board approved a new snow removal policy that went into effect April 1st of this year. I know it doesn't seem like we should be thinking about winter, but the new policy sets minimum standards for private ways to be eligible for emergency winter maintenance, including snow plowing and sanding. So just take a look at that policy, make sure you know whether or not you live on a private way, and whether or not you need to make some changes on your street. So I just would encourage you, if you don't know if your roadway is private or public, contact the Highway Barn, and they can let you know, okay? Anyone interested in volunteering, we have a number of vacancies on various committees and boards. One of those openings is on the Old Colony Elder Services Board of Directors. So that's not technically a Town of Kingston vacancy, but it is one that someone from Kingston needs to fill, hopefully. So some communities choose to appoint their Director of Elder Services or employees within the Council on Aging, while others choose to appoint someone from the community or from the COA Advisory Board. So if anyone is interested in filling that vacancy, please let us know. There's more information available on the website. And then, lastly, thank you to everyone who participated in Kingston's Third Annual Keep Kingston Clean event, where residents cleaned up litter and debris all over the community. We had pickups from many neighborhoods across town, and it was great to see everybody out cleaning up. And thank you to the Highway Department, who went around Monday morning and picked up a lot of things that were cleaned, so. Any other announcements? No? Okay. All right, so the first thing on our agenda is open forum. I don't think everybody wants to speak, but I imagine there's a few people here that would like to say something, and if you would like to speak, you can head up to that microphone. Please start with your name and address, and I just ask that we don't all say the same things. We can definitely share our opinions. I'd love to hear them. We can't respond, though, just keep that in mind.
Hello, everybody. My name is Dorothy McFarland. I live at 17 Wapping Road in Kingston, and I'm here to speak to the 10% proposed 10% increase in the high school budget. I want you to know, before I say anything, that I am all for education. My father was on the school board that built Silver Lake, as well as the elementary school. I continued my education through to my doctorate, so I think that education is important. I think that it's necessary. However, what is being proposed is unsustainable. There are many people who pay taxes in this town who will not be able to afford the increase that will have to come to cover this 10%. Seniors on fixed incomes, anybody else on a fixed income, low-income people. It's just too much of an impact, considering we're already working against inflation taking away what we have. I also want to talk about someone who's proposing this has also said that if a Kingston resident can't afford their home, well, then maybe they should sell it and buy something smaller. I can tell you, I have been looking for a smaller home. There are none available. The one or two that come up every once in a while are too expensive. They cost more than my home is worth. I will not leave my home, the key word is "home," until I absolutely have to. There are others. We have seniors here today. I have signatures from 22 seniors. I didn't have time to get any more, but a lot of people agree with me. This is just something that has to be looked at very closely and determined if it's actually a necessary thing, because it's not going to be able to be covered. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Rui Santos. I live at 67 Pembroke Street, and I own and operate the farm at 68 Pembroke Street with my entire family. I'm just here to provide you with some information. 2013, the avian influenza was discovered to be in the United States. The federal government spent tens of millions of dollars and depopulated, their term for killing, tens of millions of chickens in the Midwest that had this flu. They thought they had it eradicated. Last year, it raised its head in another variant, and it is now spreading not only through chickens, but through other animals. Eight states have had 32 herds of cows infected. It's infecting bears, it's infecting bobcats, it's infecting seals. Now, the reason I bring it to your attention is because Kingston has about 800, give or take, chickens. A third of those are on my farm. The new strain of avian influenza has been diagnosed and found in Bonstable County. It has also been diagnosed and found in Essex County. The flight path is in between. All of those people who are raising their chickens outside run the risk of having that influenza brought to them by starlings and sparrows. Right now, the Massachusetts Department of Agriculture has determined that the influenza is being spread by wild fowl, usually ducks, geese, that mix with domestic fowl. But it's only a matter of time before it winds up in the rest of the bird population. So I'm not telling you it's going to come, I'm just telling you it's out there, and with the number of people who have roughly 550 chickens that are running around in people's backyards, and if they're feeding them and watering them outside, you will run the risk of having that influenza appear. To date, it has not been found to be deadly, but the University of Minnesota, the disease infections, infectious disease experts have said that currently, the federal government's approach to this influenza is similar to what they did when COVID-19 came about initially. People can get this influenza. One man got it in Texas from cattle. So just throwing it out there, it may come down the road to you to have action on it. I don't know if there is any action that can be taken. My chickens are inside. They don't get to go outside. Anybody has any questions? I'll answer them. If not...
Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
I actually have a question. So you said your chickens are inside, so we have chickens, too, that are in a chicken run with a roof over it. They don't go out, so they're safe from droppings. I mean, and I know a lot of people in town, some have free-range chickens, obviously would be susceptible.
If you've got them outside, if you've got them outside in a closed-in area, and a starling or a sparrow gets the influenza, it will get in through the wire.
Okay.
You're not going to keep out a small starling. And to date, the influenza has not been found in anything but waterfowl.
Okay.
Okay.
And one more thing. On the 30th, we have...
The native plant.
Oh, yeah, the native plant sale is coming up on the 30th. End of talk.
Yes, I mentioned both of those in the announcements, and they're also on the website as well. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Anyone else here for open forum?
This is the time to talk, if you want to talk.
Hi, I'm Michaela Cologne. I live at 155 Summer Street. I'm here to speak on behalf of the teachers and educators. I have three children, all three at KES, but one is in the integrated preschool. My husband and I bought in Kingston in 2020. When we did so, we moved from Hanson. We decided the Hanson School system was not one that we could really jive with, and after searching different school systems, we decided on Kingston. Kingston was in our sights before we looked in Hanson. We loved how many specialists are at KES. I, myself, come from a background of being neurodivergent. I'm dyslexic. I have auditory processing and ADD. Grew up like this, misdiagnosed, and I wasn't diagnosed until I was nine, so that's pretty late on. I did receive services through my city and town, City of Quincy, Massachusetts. I was a very lucky person to have received those, because I had a mother who advocated till she didn't have breath. So I'm here to do the same for my children. My children, since I have three, they are one in three to also have dyslexia. Everybody hears that word thrown around sometimes, but I take it super seriously. This affected my whole life, and I'm sure others with these learning disabilities, it did too. So my husband and I, who live pretty much paycheck to paycheck, really try to keep up as much as we can, so we can send our kids to these schools. We do our best with trying to get involved with the community, as well as going over and beyond sending our children to extracurricular reading specialists, so that they don't come in the one to three. But there are plenty of parents who cannot afford that, right? Who rely on special education from our educators, who maybe the parents don't even know they rely on the social-emotional support that they get from these teachers. I, myself, am a teacher of aquatics, little babies to eight years old. The biggest classroom I have is 16 adults and children in a half hour. I have to walk around and integrate and talk to 16 couples. One, it's exhausting. I don't know how you do it all day. Two, I have like a minute and a half with them. So I can't imagine how many times my children ask for things within an hour of my home, taking care of my children, seven, five, and three. Two, when I'm addressing 16 couples of children and adults, I only get a minute and a half. These educators are with them for six, seven hours, right? Okay, long story short, these educators are fantastic. They deserve all of the money they can. I do empathize with the seniors, but I ask you seniors, think about in 2020, all those kiddos who are at home during the pandemic, the mental health crisis that we're having now in elementary, the intermediate school, in the high school. Let's not leave those kids behind now, right? We can do something now. You might say, well, in other towns, they cut back, but we moved to Kingston, right? So did you guys. And I don't know if you've seen Brain Tree in the news. I'm sure you're going to have many people trickling down to other states, or other states, or other cities, or thinking of homeschooling or co-ops. So that's funding that's pulling out. I'm sure you don't want funding pulled out of KES, KIS. Go teachers. Thank you for considering my spiel.
Thank you.
Sure. Again, I'll say what I came to say before. The budget, as it's proposed, has to be examined very closely to make sure that absolutely all of that 10% is necessary. They got 10% last year. Now that's 20%, plus a little, if you can add up percentages. There has to be a way to cut it and make it reasonable. We have a huge population here of seniors in Kingston, and like I said, we are already looking at inflationary prices in food, medicine, everything else that you buy, and we cannot handle such a big increase in our taxes.
So Dot, I just want to mention, you said these things, I think.
I did. I said these things again.
I apologize. I just don't want us to go back and forth with the same arguments.
I will say something different. I went to Silver Lake, graduated from Silver Lake. I've been a teacher all my life. I understand the need to support teachers. I want to know what's in the budget. Is it all necessary? Is there a way to cut it back to a reasonable percentage? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Beth Barra, 23, 3 Rivers Drive, and I'm here because I have two sons that go through the Kingston public school system. I have a fourth grader and a second grader, and they both have wonderful experiences, and I know that's, and I'm confident to say that, is because of our educators. I stand before you today, I'm sorry, I'm emotional. I stand before you today deeply concerned. The proposed educational budget cuts, while I understand the need for fiscal responsibility, I urge you to reconsider the impact that these cuts will have on our students, our teachers, and our future, and our community. I, myself, I'm getting emotional, because I, myself, am an educator. I was an elementary classroom teacher for 12 years before I transitioned to my current role as a digital learning specialist. I'm no stranger to budget cuts. I am here tonight to really kind of show you, present you with a crystal ball. It's really, I just want to give you an insight as to something that happened in my former district, so that you can see how detrimental the cuts can be, and the impact that it has, and the lasting impact it has had on my former district. So 15 years ago, my former district of East Bridgewater, their financial situation was in dire straits. The town relies heavily on the taxpayers. There's little commercial business, and revenue is really from the taxpayers, the residential taxes. Property taxes went through the roof, and I understand we have senior citizens and other people on limited incomes, but cuts had to be made somewhere, and unfortunately, in East Bridgewater, it was with the schools. For the first three years of my career, my position was the one that was on the chopping block. Specifically, in 2010, the Town's Finance Committee had proposed a school budget, with cuts exceeding $1 million, and back in 2010, that was a lot. I mean, it's still a lot, but, you know, back then, think about it. That meant 30 staffing positions across the district were eliminated. That meant nine teaching assistants, a math specialist, and a reading specialist, all at the elementary level. All professional development for the year for the teachers was cut. We went years without professional development. The class sizes ballooned to 30 kids in core classes at the high school. Electives had larger class sizes, and the JV sports were removed from the program. Our facilities were overcrowded and in disrepair. Through it all, the teachers made it work, because that's what we do. Our superintendent even took a two-year wage freeze at a time where that was unheard of. And just like Jimmy Cassa says, every student, every day, whatever it takes, she led by example. And even with those sacrifices made, we were still seeing the impacts over the next few years. A new high school had to be built, thanks to a partnership we had with Mass School Building Authority and grants, but that only went so far. In 2013, we had moved to a new, I had moved to a new school, a new building in the town, because thanks to the newly constructed high school, we were told that the, sorry, the overcrowding would be lessened, our class sizes would be smaller. I had such high hopes. Instead, I had an inclusion classroom of 28 fourth-grade students by myself, no aides, no support. More than half of my students were on ed plans, which according to the law, made it our service delivery method out of compliance. We were not providing our students what we needed to get a fair and appropriate education because of staffing and budget cuts, but we soldiered on. In 2015, we, again, were in a similar situation, so you can notice this is happening year after year. The Finance Committee asked that year that the school department reduce expenses by $1.9 million. This was the worst we had seen it. We would get rid of, this would get rid of, all specialists, so that means no gym, no art, no music. It would get rid of all of guidance, as well as sports in general, not just junior varsity, but varsity as well. Because of that, it would require one hour less in a school day to make up for the lack of specials. The accreditation was now at risk. The reason was having not enough time on learning, but also the reduction of staff. And as you know, if your town, your school in your town is not accredited, your home value is impacted, as well as your child's diploma upon graduation is tarnished if they intend to further their education. So after much deliberation and countless meetings that year, our teachers' union agreed to take a wage freeze on our salary for the next three years. We did it, because that's what we had to do for our students, to save our programs. And I'm not saying that's what we should do, absolutely not. Our teachers have been through enough. It was years of fighting with the FinCom to get to that point for us, and we had seen enough. Our students have been through enough. Unfortunately, this decision made educators to consider looking elsewhere for jobs, and we lost a lot of incredible teachers. I don't want that for us.
Hey, Beth, are you getting closer to the...
Yes, I'm sorry. Yes, I'm sorry. I just wanted to say, in the aftermath of these budget cuts, I noticed some glaring problems, and I'm just urging you, just think about what the impact will be, because I've lived through it. If we only kept these specialists back in 2010, we might not have had many students qualify for special education programs, and as you know, we cannot cut special education programs. Teachers would have been able to intervene with smaller class sizes. Teachers might have been able to devote more time to these students, but as we cut these valuable positions, we teachers are putting a Band-Aid on a bullet wound. We're stopping the bleeding, but only temporarily. As the years went on, these problems we continue to face, and just because we didn't appropriately handle them when we started. So I can see Kingston going down that path, and that is not a path that I want for my children or our community. What worries me is if we continue to cut, enrollment will be impacted, just like someone else mentioned. Parents are going to opt for private or charter schools, and we'll, as a town, have to pay that, we'll have to foot that bill. So we must weigh our options and think about the costs of decisions. I see, I just urge you guys to not make the same mistakes that East Bridgewater did, and I ask that the board and the committees get creative, think about other ways that we can cut some costs, maybe administrative costs or grants, other partnerships we can seek out. Again, just hope that we learn from other towns and not make those same mistakes. Thank you.
Thank you. Going once.
I want to mention Zoom, if anyone has anything.
Well, did you turn your mic on? You could just say that.
If anyone on the Zoom side, if they had any questions, I see one hand up, so if you want to speak.
Is that Nicole? No? Who's got their hand up? Can't see.
Is that Mary Beth? Put their hand up.
I don't see any hands up. That's something else. All right, I don't see any hands up. No? Okay.
Kim, I would just mention that when we are discussing the budget later, this isn't a budget hearing, so if you wanted to speak, I think you already said that, but...
And I also just want to mention, so the role of this board and Finance Committee, just briefly, so School Committee comes up with a budget number, and it comes up with the budget. Town Administrator Board of Selectmen come up with the sort of town side of the budget, and we give our recommended budgets to Finance Committee for their review and vetting, and they've been doing that for four months, five months at this point. So they are voting what they recommend to bring to Town Meeting to vote. So that's what they're here joining us this evening to do, as well as look at a request from the police chief. So at that point, the budget that they recommend this evening will go on the Town Meeting warrant, and then we will go to Town Meeting. We don't decide anything here as it relates to the budget. We provide a recommendation that gets printed on the handout that gets given to everyone coming to Town Meeting to vote. So it'll say on there what Finance Committee recommends, what the vote is from Finance Committee, what the vote is from the Board of Selectmen, and then Town Meeting votes to decide whether that's the number that gets put in to the next fiscal year, okay? So from that, from whatever that number is, is how schools will determine how that money is spent, whether it is what School Committee voted their recommendation or not.
And Kim, can I just add?
Yes.
At Town Meeting, when they're moving the motion for the budget, anybody can put a hold on any department budget, so they could say, police, whatever, I'm sorry to pick on police, but they could come up with the number, and somebody could say, put on a hold, and they could up it or down it. And they've, and this has happened before our Town Meeting, where somebody made a motion to cut our special ed budget, because we had it separately, and you can't. So anybody can move it up or down, and then people can make an amendment to that motion, so it can kind of go up and down.
All right. With that said, is there any other, anyone else needs to speak for open forum, or feels like they need to be heard?
Can I speak as a parent up there?
Start with your name and address. Hey, they laughed.
Sheila Vaughn, 758 Kingsdale, Mass, and I would not usually do this, but, because I'm a Selectman, and I do feel like, I do feel as though it is my responsibility to definitely be listening with the FinCom and with the Selectmen tonight, and I definitely, I really do appreciate everybody coming out today. I might have had a little bit to do with it today, to really understand that this is very important to the town. As people know, I was on the School Committee for 10 years, and I know that these changes were coming for two years. And if you ever listen to the School Committee meetings, we've been knowing about this, about Desi having to change some things over based on the integrated preschool, and our special education budgets have always been difficult, and especially since the pandemic, thank you for saying that. It's been exponentially hard with the students and with special education. We also built in programs to keep our kids in our system, so they don't go to other systems. We've built in amazing systems, the SLC and the DLC, so we've been trying to build systems inside our schools to keep our own kids and not have them go off and spend more money. We have tried very hard. I also have a kindergartner, I have an eighth grader, and a junior in high school, so yes, you can all go, why, what's wrong with you, but that's true. So I have kids in all the schools, and I completely understand that, but if you look at the way the budget is now, it is difficult, because you would always separate out special education from the regular day. And special education cannot really be changed. It's just, I know people want to say, oh, change that. If you look and you separate it out, which we can't do, you're getting nothing. It is literally nothing. They have cut what they can cut without literally having to have your child be at, really, at a disadvantage at this point. I have kids in the high school, and I have kids in the middle school, and, but I also have seniors, and I have family that are seniors in this town. I understand everybody needs a piece of this, and I'm willing to want to listen to everybody and understand it. It's just, it's not an us against them, and I can't stand when we hear about it's us against them. It's really not. We're a town, and I think it's important that we support each other, and it may not be like this next year. We have to change certain things because of regulations this year. So it's not always going to be like this. You never know what happens, but I know my husband grew up in this town, and my kids go to Silver Lake, and my kids have IEPs, and I'm supporting this budget, because I know, I've gone to the meetings, I've listened to the meetings, they've cut what they can cut. So without that, and I appreciate everybody coming tonight. Thank you.
Thanks, Sheila. Going once, going twice. And I'm going to jump, actually, since we have so many people not interested in our first couple of items, we're just going to skip ahead to the police chief. So we have a request before us, item number four, if anybody has an agenda, but it's item number four under appointments. Discussion and possible vote on amending the fiscal year 25 budget to adjust Kingston Police Department staffing needs. So just as a... And I'm going to jump actually, since we have so many people not interested in our first couple of items, we're just gonna skip ahead to the police chief. So we have a request before us, item number four, if anybody has an agenda, but it's item number four under appointments. Um, discussion and possible vote on amending the fiscal year twenty-five budget to adjust Kingston Police Department staffing needs. So just as a little introduction, Chief Brian Holmes just joined us on the fifteenth, so a week and a day ago. Um, he immediately got to work, uh, gave us a recommendation that he would like to increase some staffing, and, um, since last week has reduced that request, we, he heard some concern, not yet. Um, he expressed, we expressed some concerns regarding other elements of the budget, which you are all aware of, and um, I'll hand it over to you, Chief, to speak to your request.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I recognize the timing of this, as I said to the Finance Committee last week, is terrible, uh, with deference to the other department heads in the room. I realize that, uh, you have been asked to shave your budget down and cut. I recognize the, uh, the severity of the, um, the request for funding for the educational system. What I was asked to do, um, and a recurring theme throughout the process for selection, um, is sort of map out a roadmap of what the changes should be for the Kingston Police Department. I'm not sounding any alarm bell by saying that we're understaffed. As early as three weeks previous to my arrival in the Kingston Police Department, I was asked in the uniform supply store to add a dispatcher, and then it evolved, it evolved into a good conversation. And there are certain things that came up generically throughout the process for my selection. Uh, one of them being traffic, uh, a whole bunch of things centered on community engagement. And what started off as a request for, uh, half a million, uh, through conversations through the Chair of the, uh, Selectmen, through the Chair of the Finance Committee, and through the, uh, the agenda item last week at the Finance Committee, uh, we've shaved it down to a little over two hundred thousand, which would be a budgetary equivalent of one full-time dispatcher and a three-quarters of a fiscal year patrol officer. And I, I know that ordinarily, uh, both committees would receive backup data. I would be expected to answer questions in an academic manner about why we need what we need. I've inherited a budget that is under, underfunded, I've inherited a department that's understaffed. Uh, and with that, um, we have shaved it down between myself, Mr. Hickey, and the Chairs of the respective boards to a little over two hundred thousand. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Um, I'm glad you brought up, I'm glad you brought up some of the cuts, because not, I'm not sure people are, oh, sorry.
I'm glad you brought up some of the cuts that we've already made, so the departments came forth with their proposed budgets. Um, Town Administrator took a look at them, worked with them to cut some requests, including a thousand from Land Management and Conservation, twenty-five hundred from Elections and Registrations for Overtime, five hundred from Facilities for Training Services, fifty thousand from the Fire Department. And that's when we have, um, from, from recall, which is, it's tough, knowing that we have two firefighters down, um, to injury, and four that will be going to the academy for eleven weeks. We have a harbor master who needs tires on his truck that we essentially told him to figure it out with the money he has, um, in the current budget. And nine thousand for library books, and thirty-two thousand from overtime from the Police Department. Twenty-five hundred from the Town Clerk, and two thousand from the Treasurer, both for overtime. So I think it's, it's, it is important to note that there are a lot of department heads in this room right now, and probably online. Um, and I think they probably would appreciate some of that money back, obviously. This being a very difficult year, clearly. I understand that a dispatcher for, on the midnight shift, we have one currently, which we have to have two by statute. So I don't think that hundred and seven thousand personally is something that we can really debate much, since it is required. The patrolman, I probably need to be a little convinced, although I was in favor of it last year, and tried to get the police chief at the time on board with the idea. Um, I was on board with it the year before that, he wasn't, he didn't think we necessarily needed it, was concerned about costs. So, um, I don't know, I guess I'll leave it to the rest of the board for, for comments, but that's, that's where I'm at. I'm, I'm, understand the dispatcher on the fence, on the patrolman at this time due to budget constraints.
I have a question. Chief, I know you've had, oh, what, eight days?
It's been great.
Yeah. And, and I know there, there are certain standards. Um, are, are you basing this request for an additional officer based on standards in terms of how many residents in town versus patrolmen, or is it the increased calls, you know, especially at the, um, hotel and other places, and the apartments up at, at, um, uh, the mall, that sort of thing? Is it more activity, or is it standards, or is it both?
It's, it's less of standard, it's more of activity. Looking at the future state, um, the Kingston Police Department should see a family services unit, which would include, uh, Department of Mental Health-funded clinicians, licensed clinician, uh, and that would require an officer to be a liaison to that role. There would probably be a shared resource with other towns that may be involved that are smaller, but based out of Kingston. That's a couple of years down the road. Uh, I did a quick analysis of some of the calls, the basic log entries, not calls for service. So starting in twenty-twenty, it went thirteen, uh, thirteen thousand four hundred and thirty-four. Uh, twenty-one was thirteen thousand nine oh-three. Twenty-two was thirteen thousand one hundred and forty-eight, and twenty-twenty-three was fourteen thousand six hundred and seventy-seven. This is just log entries. Uh, I could give you a further analysis before any other future requests, uh, that would include arrests, calls for service, citations, fatalities, motor vehicle accidents, things like that. Uh, but, you know, I, I wanted to leave the Michigan State University approach out of it for now, because there's like a whole bunch of different metrics in there where you can measure it by, you know, the level of service you're providing, minimum staffing, things like that. I don't even wanna get into that at this point in time, because it is my seventh day on the job. And I'm, I'm just trying to address the need early on to sort of set the stage for what you can expect from me for future requests, and it won't be like this. You'll be able to ask me all sorts of questions, ask me for all sorts of data. I have a, a wonderful staff of people who have been helpful with, with getting me information on short notice, so, uh, I hope that answers your question.
It does, thank you.
Just to, um, to try to maybe expand upon, um, what Chief Holmes has mentioned. He and I met, uh, last week with, uh, one of the existing captains, um, and, and his admin, we talked about the request for three police officers for a full year, uh, a dispatcher for a full year, and then some additional, um, training funds, um, language, uh, and I apologize, I don't know the right terminology, but helping with, with, uh, translation. Uh, what I had said to the chief at that point, and I think we spoke, I spoke to the, the Chair of the, of the FinCom, you know, there's, there should be some, some monies left over in, in unexpendited town funds for, of seventy-five thousand dollars for us to be able to provide the training money that he's, that is being requested by the chief, that's not gonna be included in the fiscal twenty-five budget. I think Chief Holmes understood the challenges that we're facing, uh, not just in the town side of things, but also, um, the overall budget, including the schools, uh, and was willing to pare down the budget that he had proposed, which was uh, just over a half a million dollars, um, down to a dispatcher full-time, which the Chair just mentioned is statute solely required, I'm not quite sure how we got away with just one for as long as we have, but, um, and the other was a police officer, was one police officer, we're only, he's only requesting the officer for nine months. Uh, the reason for that is, it's gonna take upwards of three months to be able to go through the hiring process, uh, and make an offer to an individual that will allow the, the police chief to enroll him, and I believe in an October Police Academy, uh, and get him on board and, and, and get him started, uh, as quickly as he can. So that's the rationale between, uh, for just the nine months. The three police officers we're being asked for, for, one was for traffic, one was for, uh, court, to try to provide an upgrade uh, and inconsistency in the court process. And I'm drawing a blank on the third, Chief, maybe you can, maybe I can phone a friend, and he can help me out.
So one was full-time traffic, one was court. Public records access?
So, thank you. I, I believe, um, I believe the, the, the position that you're requesting now is to deal with the traffic, because the traffic has become, has, is at least, uh, a concern to many, many people, and, and that's the idea behind the requests you're making, you were making now. I know that when we went through the application interview process, um, I certainly shared with, with Chief Holmes that, um, there was gonna need to be a, a pretty significant investment in the Kingston Police Department moving forward, because they did not have the resources or staff, uh, obviously in a facility, that, that a modern police department should have to be able to allow them to do jobs. And I think what he's trying to do today, while it is the last second, uh, is try to begin to address those needs.
Can I ask a question?
Go ahead.
When's the last time we hired new police officers? What, nineteen ninety-six?
So I was quoted, um, last week as saying it's been thirty-five years, I, I misspoke. It, I think they might have added, uh, one or two positions twenty-five years ago.
Oh, okay.
So it, it was, I overstated that in the Finance Committee hearing, about thirty-five years since they added a position. Uh, there has been an ebb and flow of attrition of positions for patrol and dispatch periodically. Uh, the most recent, I think, was oh-nine, ten, eleven, uh, for the attrition of a dispatcher position, I have data on it.
You know what our town, what our town census was back then, and our town census now?
Yeah.
No, but I know that the town census now, after doing an extensive tour, one of the lieutenants today is definitely not accurate. There are more people here than it indicates in the, in the census.
And, and we have, existentially have at least maybe over a hundred more people than we have had in our past, maybe living here. Um, so there is a lot more people living around here, I think there's a lot more issues going on mental health-wise too, and, um, I just wanted to make that clear, you know, it's been twenty-five years since anybody's asked for anything, and so.
I, I just wanna add, um, so the search committee was the Town Administrator Tyler and I from the Board of Selectmen, and, um, Chief Douglas, our fire chief. And, and Keith, you are absolutely right, and one of the things we talked about was traffic. And, um, I mean, we definitely have more traffic, we have more people. You know, I see it near the school, people flying on twenty-seven, going right across, and there's been accidents just in the past couple of weeks. With, you know, the, the Regional School Committee has a, um, subcommittee put together, um, looking at, uh, traffic safety there, and we're gonna be hitting you up, we're just giving you a little break. Uh, welcome to town, um, but there's. Thank you. There's definitely a lot of work that needs to be done over near the school, um, in terms of traffic enforcement, um, because people are flying on that road. So I would be in support of adding a, an officer, especially if they're gonna be, um, helping out with traffic. I think, a- as I said, that was one of the things we were looking for when we were talking to the chiefs, um, that we heard from the community, and the, the feedback that we got when we put out the survey to, um, the citizens of Kingston to get their feedback on what they're looking for in a chief.
Yeah, I think, I think to echo a bit what Eric's saying is, you know, during the search process, we talked a lot about issues that we had, um, in town, you know, traffic, schools, you know, all the things that you needed to run a town. And then issues that we hear from the, from the community, and now that we have a new chief, and, and we wanna step into the next season, um, with the Police Department, I don't wanna, I, I don't wanna have that first year be, um, without some tools to be able to make that better, to be able to make that, um, ma- make that step forward. And I think, um, what Chief did right away was show that there's some holes in, in, in the PD, which we knew going into it. And we knew last year and the year before that, that we needed a new patrolman, so I think this is catching up. I don't think this is, this, we, we know this isn't lavish, this isn't crazy, and I think that we're gonna meet something down the road. Next year, the year after, we're gonna need a very large budget to get to the place where we need to be. This is a step, I think this is a very healthy step forward, I know it's a crazy year, but this is a very healthy, healthy step forward. We've asked a new chief to come in for the town, um, and I think that this is, we wanna give him the tools and his tool belt to be able to achieve what this Police Department, what this town needs, um, and I think this is a great step forward. Um, one of them is a mandate, and the other one is, I think, I, I don't wanna say common sense, because we know what we're dealing with budgets, this, this is real, this is real life. But in, 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 without budgets, this is, this, uh, being considered, this is definitely, um, common sense, that we need a new, we need another access to patrolmen, and, uh, I'm in favor of it to the support of the chief and moving forward as the department for this next year.
Do you want a motion?
Not yet. So I have, uh, I have two questions, I think. Well, one is for this board. If we knew we needed a patrolman, we should have put that in the budget. We knew we were getting a new police chief, we advocated for it last year, we should have put it in the budget. We made a mistake in not doing that for Finance Committee for their consideration in the first place. So if we knew we needed a patrolman, we should have had it in there, so shame on us. Secondly. What's the policeman gonna drive? We don't have a car for them.
We have, we have enough.
Bike patrol? Bike patrol, that's Finance Committee.
You want a bicycle? I, I, well, I don't know, I, I mean, I.
Well, that's probably cheaper than a car.
I am actually looking at, uh, a couple of different resources on that. We might have enough at the time, at this time to get by, but, uh, the traffic car you talking about?
Mm-hmm.
Right.
I'm just thinking you add, when you add a patrolman, you usually have a car, right? We replace, everybody knows this, every year at town meeting, we vote two patrol vehicles get replaced, right? I mean, we do this every year. So I just get concerned that we're adding one person without giving them something to drive.
I think we have enough in the fleet to get by for the time being.
Okay. Alright, so this is what I'm going to say, if, um, well, does Finance Committee have any question? Are you guys called to order, or did you wanna participate in this?
Yeah, I think the first thing we should do is, uh, call the meeting of the Finance Committee to order at ten minutes of seven, and we'll do a roll call vote, because we have two members online. Carl Pike here.
Michael Cowlett here.
David Fuller here.
Elaine Fiore here.
Jason Laveras here.
Derek Bell notes are, um, remote, but here.
Deborah Moran, um, remote, but here.
Okay, the, um, we, we will discuss this briefly. I sent you all the information for the five hundred and fifty thousand dollar request, so that you've had time to look at that. In here, you've just heard the reduction to two hundred and twenty thousand. And I should state that this is an example of what ten percent budget increase has to do with.
He's gonna need the microphone closer. Sorry, Carl.
Ten percent school budget, uh, increase greatly limits what we can do with the rest of the town budget. The s- school budget is this year at the current level fifty-five percent of the total, at a plus ten percent increase. Um, I, the only thing I'm gonna say on that is that I, I get disturbed when I hear parents being so concerned about major budget reductions. I can tell you, I have been heavily involved in the school budgets and the town budgets for twelve years now. And I know that the types of reductions that we were talking about to get us from maybe ten percent increase to even an eight percent increase, we're not going to double the size of classes. We're not gonna eliminate a ton of teachers. We're not going to be, uh, a lot of terrible issues on the, um, special education. I, I just think that we tend to hear that somebody wants to make reductions to a school budget a- as being a crisis. But we really do need to consider all of the town. We need to consider when we need to hire a new dispatcher for a hundred thousand dollars. We need to consider when the, um, senior citizens, I was the treasurer here for three years, and I've heard a lot of people say, everybody that calls me wants to have our schools the best they can be. Absolutely agree with that. But I never hear anybody say, I got a phone call that I can't pay my taxes. Are you, as the treasurer, Carl, are you going to be foreclosing on my property? So I would just ask that people try to understand and not overreact, okay? That being said, the only reason I say it is because that's an example of why I'm struggling with a simple request for two hundred and twenty thousand dollars here to do some supplemental funding for the police budget. A police budget that's around three million dollars, not thirty-two million dollars, which our education budget is. With that, I'll open it up for comments from other Finance Committee members.
If I can, a question for the Board of Selectmen and Mr. Hickey. Uh, January ninth, when you put the budget packets together, there was three hundred and nine thousand dollars worth of cuts that were gonna be proposed if needed for the budget. Since then, that's been revised to two hundred and seventy-nine thousand. Is any of those cuts gonna happen, so maybe we can offset it with the police funding?
So, um, if I may, Elaine, the, the Budget Advisory Committee asked for a level services budget and what we would propose to cut to get to three percent. Now, that's both, that's everybody, that's town, that's schools, that's everything. So what Mr. Hickey put forth was, here's our level services budget, and it ended up being, where are we now, four point three percent, I think, at the moment? Depending on how this goes.
Without the schools, you're at five percent.
Just, I thought it was four point three, last I saw. Okay, so.
Okay, so somewhere between four and five.
But not three.
But the level services budget being 4.3% with a list of potential cuts to get to 3%. We provided that to this board. This board said, "Okay, we'll look at that if Finance Committee needs cuts made." Thus far, I believe most, every budget was unanimously supported by Finance Committee. If you guys want to make some cuts, we've given you a list to do that. So you're welcome. Welcome to pursue them.
We were voting based on the caveat, what the school budgets came in at. And it had been said at our meetings, based on what the school budgets come in at, this $300,000 was on the table. So I think it's...
So, I mean, it's your budget to present at town meeting, right? So if you wanted to propose making cuts to that, you're welcome to. I mean, I would probably vote against that, given that it's 4.3, sounds like a reasonable number to me. But if you guys want to talk about that, you can talk about that.
So can I just jump in a little bit? So when we went to the Budget Advisory Committee meeting this fall, members of the School Committee, superintendent of schools, myself, a member of the Board of Selectmen, Finance Committee Chair gave the direction to all, to the town and the school to commit with a budget that increased spending no more than 3%. I couldn't do that, frankly, and present a budget that I could support at 3%. So what I did, after discussion with the board, was I presented a budget that was above 3%, but gave the Board of Selectmen my recommended cuts if they wanted to cut deeper. I don't support these cuts, other than the $75,000 that I've already cut in the procurement position, because I'm trying to find a middle ground to address the needs of the community and address the needs of the town without impacting the operations of the municipal portion of this operation. Everything that you have listed here will eliminate positions, eliminate services that are currently in place. I don't, I was asked, these adjustments are adjustments that I thought were items such as, you know, brush chipping and the elimination of the transfer station Monday night hours. We don't have to provide those services. We do at the, so it's a little more convenient for the public to go up to the transfer station. That's eliminating a service. And that's, if something that the FinCom wants to propose, you can certainly do that. But there's two positions on this list, one of which was a streets, trees, and parks position. There was an existing position that I don't recommend cutting at the time. It was an open position. The other was the procurement position, which I would very much prefer to have. But in trying to understand, in seeing and understanding the challenges that we're facing with a bottom line budget the way we have it, I proposed to the Board of Selectmen and to the Finance Committee to eliminate that position to try to get closer to where we want to be.
Right.
This is not a list of cuts that I support. It's just the list of cuts I needed to provide to get to the number of 3%.
Right. So I guess to let Chief Holmes potentially sit down.
I'm okay.
Unless he wants to stand there all night. I guess I would say, this, in my mind, is an adjustment to the Board of Selectmen's recommended budget to Finance Committee. So if we're changing any column in our budget book, it's, do we, as a board, recommend adding this request to the recommended budget for police for Finance Committee's consideration? That's my question. Well, that's my question.
Do you want a motion?
Sure.
All right. So I move the Board of Selectmen include the request for additional police staffing in the proposed FY '25 budget.
For the amount of $220,174?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any additional discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Kicking it to you.
Any other questions by any other members of the Finance Committee concerning the $220,174 proposed increase to the police budget?
Not a question, but a discussion.
Go ahead.
So first of all, welcome, Chief.
Thank you.
How's it going?
Great.
So here are my thoughts on this topic. So as you were presenting, I was multitasking. And I multitask during the day. I don't like multitasking at night. I don't multitask as well at night. And I'm feverishly Googling town population changes and all kinds of good stuff. And sadly, and this is just my opinion, one member of the board...
Can you get the microphone closer to you, David? Sorry.
Unfortunately, in my eyes, the request is too late, all right? We've already been through the police budget. Now, with that being said, I'm open next year, or in a fall town meeting, but at this point, it's too late. I don't have the data. I don't have the research. I haven't been able to research to move forward in recommending this. Now, with that being said, though, I do trust my chair. I do trust the TA. And in good faith, I shall trust you. And if you tell me that we are out of a statutory requirement, well, that's unacceptable. So just one person here, I would be okay with 107. And I would defer the officer or officers for next budget round. But we need to be in compliance with the state requirements. Just my thoughts.
Jason or Mike, any comments?
No.
Any comment from Deb or Derek?
No comment.
I was just going to say, the reason why I brought up the reductions of the $309,000 is because it was a list that was put together and presented to us. These weren't cuts that we proposed. In addition to that, Silver Lake has cut, KIS has cut. Other than maybe $100,000, if even that, I don't think it's unreasonable to move forward with these suggested cuts, half of them, whatever, to offset with the police request. That's my comment.
Actually, Carl, I wasn't aware until tonight that we only have one dispatcher on the midnight day shift. I don't necessarily agree that it's a statutory requirement. I don't know of a law that requires two dispatchers. However, it's very unsafe, the dispatching of the police and fire department. All it takes is one call to overwhelm that dispatcher. And for those reasons, Chief, I certainly support that request.
Can I clarify?
Sure.
I had somebody share with me that it's a National Fire Prevention Administration standard, recommended standard. I don't know the exact context of that, but I know that when it gets busy on the midnight shift and you need help, well, that help might be a police officer who's on the street and who's otherwise occupied. It gets busy. It gets busy fast. You start looking at needing MedFlight. You start looking at needing mutual aid, multiple alarms on a fire. So I want to clarify that point. If I also may add to Mr. Fuller's comments that, I don't know, were you at the hearing last week? Is that a question for that? Well, I just, I do have to add that it's about eighteen months to get a police officer who's ready to go out on their own. So between the background check process, which is upwards of a month to six weeks, taking the civil service, BLIST, getting it certified, getting the candidate, doing all those things, from medical to psychological, then sending them to a six-month police academy, and then waiting for that academy, and then doing the two-month field training period, that's what you've got to do to get somebody out on the street. So it is anywhere from sometimes 10 to 24 months, but on average, about eighteen months.
Understood.
Okay, I think what I'd like to do is move this in two pieces. Let's have a motion concerning the dispatcher position.
I move the Finance Committee recommend an increase in the budget for the Police Department for purposes of hiring an additional dispatcher in the amount of $107,618. Second.
All in favor? Carl, aye.
Michael, aye.
David, aye.
Elaine, aye.
Jason, aye.
Derek, aye.
Debbie, aye.
All right. So we recommend approval of that, seven-zero. Now I'd like a motion on the additional police officer at $112,556.
I move the Finance Committee recommend an increase to the budget for the Kingston Police Department for purposes of hiring an additional police officer in the amount of $112,556.
Second.
For discussion, I just want to make the point on this that I should have made before that with these expenditures, we will be within about $650,000 of taxing the maximum. Since I've been on this Finance Committee twelve years, I have worked hard to have Kingston be conservative and not what I call tax to the max.
So Carl, sorry, can I just ask? That is assuming the school budget passes as presented by School Committee.
That's correct.
Okay.
That's what I was just going to point out. With the school budget, and the school budget, it's either a 10.6% increase or a 10.3% increase, depending upon what you look at, the baseline from last year. But in any case, with that percentage increase, with everything else that's in the budget, and if we go to this $220,000, we'll be within $650,000 of taxing residents to the maximum that we can tax them. And I can assure you people with 98% assurance that we will be looking for a Proposition Two and a Half override next year, because it'll set the baseline such that the only way we would not need a Proposition Two and a Half override next year would be if schools and town functions, everybody came in at approximately 3% to 3.5% increase. And so I just want to have that out. And now we will vote on this police officer. All in favor? Carl, aye.
Derek, aye.
Elaine, aye.
All opposed?
Michael, no.
David, no.
Five-two in favor of recommending that we add this to our budget for the Police Department. Carl, if I may? Yes. Can I make another motion just to see if these cuts go anywhere or not? Certainly. Okay. We have a sheet that has an amount of $279,753 at the top. But then taking into consideration the elimination of brush chipping and the procurement officer, it looks like it comes down to $189,142. I'll make a motion to reduce the general fund budget by $189,142. Do I have a second?
I'll second for discussion.
Comments, questions? And just for those in the audience, some of the proposed reductions would be eliminate Monday evening hours at the transfer station, not fill the open position at street, trees, and parks, reducing tuition reimbursement, $10,000. Contract resourcing, $25,000. Fire special program, $7,500. Tax collector tax title, $5,000. Rec maintenance, $5,000. Police travel meetings, $1,000. Police property repairs, $5,000. Fire training seminars, $2,000. Fire maintenance, $5,000. Harbor master overtime, $1,000. Reserve fund, $10,000. Facilities, this is the big hit, $16,000. Border health overtime, $1,000. Veterans longevity, $1,000. And health insurance stipend, $15,000.
I am not going to take any public comments on this. This is not an open hearing, a public hearing. It's a meeting of the Finance Committee. So I think that we will not have any comments.
It's their...
I just want to clarify something, Mr. Chairman. That open position for the Highway Department is no longer available. It's filled. So if we vote those cuts in, I will have a layoff.
Thank you.
Can I make a friendly amendment then and reduce it by that amount of $18,642? My math's not that quick.
Yeah, that's the $61,000.
I believe it's the $61,000 fine item.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, $61,000. Yes, I can do that math quick. $129,142.
$128.
$128,142. Thank you. Friendly amendment.
My comment while we're discussing this is, again, I go back to the school increase. Normally, I would probably be considering some of these reductions. But I can't bring it upon myself to ask any other departments when we're at about a 4.5% increase for all the other departments to take these types of reductions when we're, you know, thinking about trying to support a 10-plus percent increase for the education lines.
David?
And, Mr. Chairman, not to mention, just so the public knows, we have nickelled and dimed the hell out of this budget. The hell out of this budget, right? Does anyone care about the environment? Conservation budget hardly raised. Nickelled and dimed the heck out of it, right? Got all kinds of state grants, free money that's not free, right? So, you know, I could go on a further soapbox. Maybe I'll save it for a little later. But we've done our due diligence here. And we continue to do our due diligence. And, you know, this is not sustainable, people. It is not sustainable. We've already nickelled and dimed. I'm not sure that's going to make a hill of beans a difference.
Well, and I'll just follow up with that, and then we can go to a vote if everybody wants to. So the Town Administrator already told us this year he could not get to 3%. He could not give us a 3% increase budget. Mr. Pike has said that unless next year comes in at 3% or 3.5%, we're definitely going to an override. We're going to an override next year, because this year's budget's over 4% increase just for the town side. The general fund budget is over 4%. Next year's an override. And yes, I agree, we've nickelled and dimed. But next year, it's going to be worse than this.
And let me take that crystal ball one step further. And it's sad in this community. Tyler said it, catching up. This is all catching up to us. The errors at the federal level and the state level are now at the local level. It's catching up. And people need to really take a hard look at what's going on. And here's what the crystal ball shows. We're going to Prop Two and a Half next year. We're going to a town-wide vote. And it's going to be neighbor against neighbor. It's going to be "Support the Children" signs in green. And it's going to be "No New Taxes" in red, neighbor and neighbor. And that's not fair. And it's not right. And it should never get to that. And I hope it doesn't get to that, but I'm telling you, that's what my crystal ball shows me. And it's not sustainable.
Thank you, David. Any other comments before we vote on this motion? The motion on the table is to ask the administration to reduce the budget by the $128,142. All in favor?
Elaine, aye.
All opposed? Carl, nay?
Michael, no.
David, aye. Jason, no.
Debbie, no.
Derek, no.
One-six, not in favor. I turn it back to you, Madam Chair.
All right. So if anyone wasn't following, have you already transitioned into our Finance Committee?
Sorry, microphone. He gets it down.
I can't, I just, Madam Chair, Mr. Chair, I just wanted to thank you both and Keith for blowing your week up last week. The men and women of the Kingston Police Department greatly appreciate it. So do I. Thank you.
I mean, you can stay there if you want. No. Okay, so we are on the review and finalize warrant, which really, I believe, in terms of Finance Committee's role in that, we need a budget from you that you guys are ready to support and bring to town meeting that we can then vote on. So you handed it back to me, but I'm passing it right back. So you handed it back to me, but I'm passing it right back to you. So if anyone, so I'm sure a lot of people in this room know where we were last week, but school committee put forth a budget, which the numbers are in the draft warrant. Silver Lake, I have a Silver Lake Regional School District assessment at 16,744,111. Hopefully, that's what you guys all have as well, with the local school budget proposed at 14,568,740. Last week, finance committee met. They met and said, and the chairman had them vote on the proposed school budget. If they had an agreement or a majority, they would just move on. So that initial vote to support the 10.3, to go on to the warrant, 10.3% increase or six or whatever, the 14 million I just read, to bring that to town meeting was a 2-4-0 vote, which means it failed, it did not get the votes it needed to move forward.
That is incorrect. It was actually a tie vote.
It was 2-4-0 initially, and then there were, there was more discussion, and then proposed cuts, and then there was a revote that then tied 3-3-0, which again fails. So they then adjourned their meeting, and we are here this evening. So, sorry, Carl, I know you tried to hand it back, but it's all yours.
We have, between several finance committee meetings, we've discussed these school budgets. Does anybody want to add anything else? The way I see it, we have a couple of choices here. Number one, we can, we have seven members here now, so we can vote the total budgets that we have, the 16,744 and the 14,569. And if we get a 4-3 vote on that, or a 5-2 vote, or a 6-1, or a 7-0, then we have supported the budgets as provided, and we don't need to go any further. If we do not agree to pass that, those numbers, then we can start discussing what numbers we want to go to town meeting with. I had given some potential items at our meeting last week where I suggested reductions of about 700, about 650,000 dollars in the total 31 million dollar budget, or an alternative of about a million dollars, or an alternative of about a million-two. So what are your thoughts? If I'm not getting any thoughts, then I'm going to look for a motion to support to the total numbers.
I'll make a motion to support the Silver Lake in education budgets amounts of 16,744,111. 16 million and 14,568,740.
Second for discussion.
Comments?
I'll just reiterate what I said at the last meeting, which was that we were tasked with the level services budget. This is level services for, if we're looking at a teacher-to-student ratio, and the impact that educational cuts will have, in my mind, will extend far beyond just children, who do make up an equal percentage in this, in our town population as seniors. I pulled the census data earlier today. So I will support the budget that I know the school committee spent a lot of time trying to nickel and dime down, just as we have tried to do. It's not a fun vote, but it's unfortunately the vote that we have.
Any other comments?
I have a question. Last week, I asked what the, if the school committee had considered those additional cuts and what that would, what that would look like. I don't think the, the answer really, that I was giving, really answered, the one person that was here to speak on that really answered the question. So I know the superintendent's here today. Have the, has the school committee looked at a budget in the 8% range, and what would those additional cuts look like?
So at this, at this point, so we have, do we have a quorum for both committees? Kingston? No, okay. So I don't know who, who from the schools want to speak to that, but it's a complicated question, because we have Silver Lake, but also local schools. So to get to that 8% number, it's a little difficult.
I'm going to call to order the Kingston meeting.
Go up to the microphone, too, though.
Hickey is asked to speak.
Okay. Sorry, you, no one at home can hear you unless you go up to that microphone. Sorry.
Hello, Tim Lewis, Kingston School Committee, and a call to order the Kingston School Committee. We do have a quorum. Timothy Lewis, present. Tricia Arietta?
Present.
Jean Coleman?
Present.
Okay. Thank you. Mrs. Emberg, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Hickey. She is the business coordinator for the district. She would like to address both boards.
Thank you. There was a comment earlier, well, thank you for allowing me to speak, Madam Chair. There was a comment earlier about how this is a level service budget for the schools, and I want you to take a look at the section of the flyer that says overview. On March 14th, the Silver, a 40,547,770 level service budget was presented to the Silver Lake Regional School Committee. From that level service budget, the school committee voted to reduce the Silver Lake budget and to use excess and deficiency as revenue source for Silver Lake in order to decrease the assessment. So cuts have been made from Silver Lake from the level service budget already. At that point in time, the Kingston budget was, I'm sorry, I'm jumping through my pamphlet here. The Kingston's level service budget was 14,962,392.50. Again, this goes back to March 14th, and that was a level service budget, and since then, the Kingston School Committee has voted reductions to that budget.
Sorry, can I just, back to Jason's question, just for a point of clarification. So I think he's looking at the, correct me if I'm wrong, but we're looking at the 10-point, what is the number?
Six, 10.6.
10.6, okay. So we're looking at a 10.6% increase. You are asking, has the school, it's hard, because it's the two committees, have they considered trying to get to 8%? And if so, what would that look like? Right? So I guess that's the question, is has the, has the school, Silver Lake, the district locally, attempted to get to an 8% increase? And if so, what does that look like? So that's Jason's question. Okay.
So, so when the, so Carl was at the March 14th school committee meeting and gave advice to the administration. We then went and met with the school administration, and the principals of Kingston Elementary and Kingston Intermediate School put together a series of cuts and presented that to the school committee meeting. There were tier-one cuts, which were supplies and materials. There were tier-two cuts, which were some cuts for staff members, reducing positions due to retirement, moving a staff member into a grant fund. And then tier-three cuts were beginning with pink slips and layoffs. Thank you. And then tier-four cuts, the principals said to us, if we had to do tier-four cuts, this is what they would be, but we couldn't run a school making these cuts. So the school committee at the April 2nd school committee meeting voted to go with the tier-one and tier-two cuts.
Which got to the 10.3%. So I think the answer is, so, God, 10.6. I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to get you the answer you're asking for.
So, Jason, as you know, the budget's, because it's a combined total increase, the total increase between the two schools, which is Silver Lake and Kingston, is a 10.6% increase. Kingston alone is looking at a negative 11% decrease to our budget. But because Silver Lake's budget is up 38% this year, the assessment for Kingston, I believe it's around 15%, and that's where you're getting the overall increase for Kingston at 10.6%. Overall, in the district, it's a, it's an 8.4% increase, which is actually right in regards to Ms. Hickey's presentation a few weeks ago, is right in the mean of where other districts are coming in around the state. As someone mentioned earlier, Braintree just pink slipped 100 staff members. Hanover, I believe, without an override, it would be 41 staff members. Tier-three cuts for Kingston would be 13 staff members. That includes paraprofessionals and teachers for Kingston.
Just on that point, Jason also, I want to mention, so Halifax, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, was at a 4.9% increase in the total cost of education, and that's based on the presentation I saw on, at the Silver Lake meeting. Yep, and that Plimpton was 6.8, so it says there.
But, but if I may add to that?
Yep.
So because of the restructuring that's going on, I know that it was mentioned at the Silver Lake meeting that a lot of the overall budget impacts aren't because of that, but for Kingston, it is a negative impact of more than a half million dollars, because now Kingston is responsible for the special education costs of the entire district for grade seven through 12, and if a child's eligible, up to age 22, as well as preschool. So whereas before, Kingston School Committee used to handle 100% of the special education costs for the district for all of Kingston students, and that included ages three through 22 that were eligible for an IEP. Now we're responsible for a greater percentage of the entire district's special education because of the way that the assessment works for the Silver Lake portion of the budget. So the savings there actually went to Halifax, and Plimpton and Kingston were hit with the reassessed figures. So that's why, when you look at the 4.9% for Halifax, they're actually looking at quite a bit of cuts, but they are also seeing some savings for their children that are in the preschool program because of what Kingston is paying, because of the reassessment.
I know you guys are in the middle of a vote, so Carl, just let me know if I can ask this question, just related to these. So looking at these tier-one, tier-two, and tier-three cuts, I realize, so we do not have any line item control over schools at all. So that's all school committee. We don't, finance committee sets a number, and schools decide how to do it. But looking at this, I guess I'd be curious, I know the vote was three to two on the 10.6?
Negative 11. We only have jurisdiction over the Kingston budget.
Fine, on the budget that was proposed?
Correct.
Okay, it was a 3-2, right? That, okay. Eliminating the tier, accepting the tier-one and tier-two cuts, but not tier-three. Did you guys consider partial tier-three, or was it just no to tier-three entirely?
I'll speak to that.
Sure.
My motion was for the proposed tier-one and tier-two cuts. There were no further motions made.
Okay.
But with that said, we also don't have any potential votes on our agenda for tonight, so just to clarify where we're at. So it's a discussion, but it's not a possible vote.
Yeah, Jean captured that accurately. The motion was made, it was seconded, and a vote after lengthy discussion. The budget was passed, and there was a recommendation sent to FinCom and ultimately to you guys. There was no discussion to reconsider our budget, any further discussion to reconsider our budget. And this was, if I can just speak to why I was in the dissenting vote. I wanted to avoid getting to where we are today, but I understand the varying perspectives of the community and my other committee members.
Jason, I'm afraid that's probably about as good an explanation as you might get. I have been trying to understand it better myself and have not gotten there. Any other questions or comments?
I just want to make a comment that budgets like this usually come down to the schools, but as been said tonight, and I will continue to say it, it is a community. There are 4,000 seniors in town, maybe 1,500 students in the Kingston schools. The rest of them are part of the community as well, so we're talking maybe another 8,000 residents in town. This is going to affect everybody, everybody, one way or the other. And like we've said, we all know we're going for an override next year, and as a member of the finance committee, I, I look at my fiduciary responsibility is to the town as a whole. So I'm sure there'll be no surprise when I vote, but I just have to take into consideration the whole, the full community and the impact that it's going to have on more people than you're even going to guess, that some of the situations people are in are sad now. Inflation isn't helping that, and it's going to be, you know, sorry situation in Kingston without affordable housing, a serious effort made on that, and a serious effort for economic development. Without additional revenue, this is our future, which isn't much of a future for many.
And I guess one thing that I'd like to add, again, to try to put things in perspective, is that in trying to get to a approximate 8% increase, which I believe is not sustainable, but I had hoped that perhaps an 8% increase would be kind of a compromise that we could all work with, that we wouldn't be making tremendous reductions. And in order to get to that 8% increase, we were looking at less than a 2% decrease at the local schools and at the regional. So that the, think of it as two doll pennies out of every dollar. It wasn't like, and it's still not like, that this committee, that there's nobody in town looking to make massive reductions at the education. And I know it's, it's tough to understand why we have to even talk about this, but as Elaine said, we really do have an obligation to 15,000, 14,500 people in Kingston. And yes, I have grandchildren in the system. I've had grandchildren graduate from the system, and I have been a big supporter of education. I've been accused by fellow finance committee members and selectmen in prior years. Carl, all you do is support the school budgets in, at the expense of some of the other town budgets. That being said, I'm going to make the motion.
You have another motion seconded on the table.
You have a motion for the, for the original budget.
All right. Any, any further talk? All in favor of the local school budget as presented and the Silver Lake assessment for Kingston as presented?
Michael, yes.
Debbie, yes. I mean, I'm not happy about it, but I'm voting for it.
Derek, yes.
All opposed?
If you haven't figured it out yet, I'm the decider vote. It was a 3-3 last week.
Yeah, but they still get a chance to vote.
Well, they can get a chance to vote. Reluctantly, I am a yes.
Elaine, no.
Jason, yes.
The finance committee has recommended approval of the school budgets as presented.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Were there any other, you have to vote the whole budget, right? Still, or no?
Yes.
I don't know.
So just a reminder, everybody, just a reminder.
I couldn't hear because of that.
That's not the budget that passed. That just goes to town meeting. Town meeting votes on the budget. So if that's the budget you want to pass at town meeting, you need to go to town meeting and actually vote. So I just want to make sure that's clear. No, I meant the school budget, for the folks that are here for that. Is that what you wanted?
Thanks. Oh, yeah, we still have to vote it.
But we're, it's not important for us to vote it right in this moment. We can.
I would.
I'm letting them finish theirs, because they're going to do a whole budget number, too.
Yeah, we still have to vote it.
No, I'm waiting for them to vote.
All right. I move that the finance committee recommend approval by town meeting of Article Six, the Fiscal 25 General Fund Operating Budget, total budget in the amount of $57,658,693.
Second.
All in favor?
Michael, yes.
Debbie, yes. Jason, yes.
Derek, yes.
Debbie, yes.
All opposed. Cal, nay.
Elaine, nay.
Five-two, the finance committee recommends approval of the total budget at $57,658,658,693.
All right. Do you have more that you need to do this evening?
I believe that's it for the finance committee.
Did you want to adjourn your meeting so you don't have to sit here?
I move the finance committee meeting for April 23rd, 2024, adjourn at 7:36 PM.
Happily second.
All in favor?
Michael, yes.
Debbie, yes.
Elaine, yes.
Jason.
Derek, yes.
Debbie, yes.
We can, we want to. We can do it now, doesn't matter. We can do it whenever. Okay, so I have, I have a request before me from the Board of Selectmen to also vote those to get that done. So I have a couple of members who'd like to vote the school numbers and the total budget number now, since it's what we're talking about, might as well get through it. So I think, I guess it depends how you guys want to do it.
Do you want to discuss it first? Do you want to make a motion? Because I will make a motion.
It doesn't matter to me. I would prefer to take the schools separately than the over, than the rest of the budget.
We are taking it separately?
I would like to.
Okay.
I can't take the school's budget separately because they're together.
That's fine, then I can vote it, the way that I need to vote it.
I, I really need to say something because I'm just, the scare tactics are making me really upset right now, and the fact that I've been told about scare tactics and what I just listened to about two and a half percent overrides and that our children, and I get it, I get everything that's talking about the seniors and everything, but to be sitting here and talking about two and a half overrides in the way that it's discussed, it's just, it's, I get it, we're all making, making decisions that are really difficult, but it's not the scare tactics that make me upset. And it is teachers that will lose their job until three. Like you just said, oh, they're not going to lose their jobs, don't be scare tactics. You're losing their jobs. There's 13 teachers that are going to go, if you make that, if you make that decision. So, yes, I want to make a motion to, to.
Sorry, Jill, I'm not sure I understand what you mean.
If they did tier three, they would lose teachers.
Oh, I was just asking if they considered parts of it, but they didn't. So, so.
I'm just saying, but.
The finance committee supported it. So I think that part's resolved, no?
Well, not our, not our side yet, but sure. I just need to, I'm just really upset.
That's fine.
So I would like to move, I don't know if anybody wants to say something.
Was it 57,658,698?
No, I thought you were going to do the schools.
Nine-three, okay. No, just do it together then.
No, you, I don't, no, the schools, we can do separately because don't we have to? Or do we want to just do the full?
I don't think you have to.
We can do the full budget.
All right. I make a motion for the, for the budget, yes. $57,000, $57,658,693.
Second.
All right. All of those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? No.
Thank you.
It's easy enough.
Thank you.
So, and for anyone who's curious, I've mentioned before, in the school committee meeting, in these meetings, 10% budgets year over year is not sustainable. That's all. It's not sustainable.
Can I add something? And maybe Jill, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but if town meeting votes a number that the school committees did not vote, Jason Fraser had made a statement that the school committee would, I think, you have to re-vote the number. If something, there was something about if they don't vote a budget, don't have a budget on July 1st, the state will then.
So, yeah, what happens?
Oh, you have to go up to the microphone, sorry.
And I have a follow-up.
Sure.
Hi, I'm Paula Hatch. I'm the Chair of Silver Lake Regional School Committee, and thank you for all your difficult consideration tonight on both school budgets. What happens at the regional level is we have three towns in our region. The budget goes before all three towns. If one town votes no, and the other two towns vote yes, the budget is as it was presented. It doesn't change. And the town that did not approve the budget is forced to accommodate that budget. If two or more towns decline the budget as presented, then the school committee has to go back to the drawing board, come up with a different number, perhaps a number that the towns have provided, and agree to that number. If we don't have an agreed upon budget by July 1st, what happens is the state requires us to then be on a budget of one-twelfth of our prior year budget. If we then don't have a budget by December 31st of that year, the state steps in and takes over. And if I've said anything wrong, Gordon Andrews, who is an expert in this topic, please correct me, but that's the way it works, when you're a regional school system.
So I think, and I was on the school committee for 16 years on the elementary, and then I think seven or six or something on the, on the regional. So I'd been dealing this, with this for a long time. But I remember many, many years ago, back in the 2000s, when I first started on the elementary, we looked at the per pupil spending, and we were well above, we were pretty high in the state, one of the reasons why we moved to Kingston. So DESI has the per pupil spending, and it's available to download and look at this data. So I looked at this data recently, and the state average is $20,500 per pupil before out of district special ed. It's now, with special ed, it's only 21-1, so they're only adding an average of $600 per student. Kingston is 11,800, well, this is in '23, not '24, not '25, in '23, which is the most current. It was $11,900 per student, $15,000 with out of district education. And that was when all the special ed, pre-K through age 22 was covered under elementary. Silver Lake is separate. So Silver Lake was 22-8 before out of district. High schools are more expensive to run. And then with out of district at the time, it was, it's actually less, so that doesn't make sense. But anyways, the average is about $17,000 before out of district and about $18,500. Again, this is in '23, well below the state average. We're below Pembroke, we're below Whitman Hansen. Whitman Hansen is higher than us, and people are leaving Whitman Hansen to come to Kingston. So, and the other thing that I've said over and over and over and over is charter schools. When you cut schools, and we've been cutting for years, I was on it years ago when we passed an override, which was tough, and it was neighbor against neighbor, like you guys said, and this was many, many years ago. But I was on the school committee when we cut band, we cut art, gym, PE, down to like one day in elementary schools, which was a nightmare. The teachers were probably like, what are you doing to me? You know, it wasn't good for the kids. We made a lot of cuts, and it takes years to get those things that you cut back. And then we cut maintenance, and that doesn't, that doesn't help. And they've cut. And that, every year we have to cut, before you hit teachers, you're cutting textbooks, supplies, you're cutting all kinds of things. So what happens, people leave the school, they go to charter schools. You make cuts, you make it worse. People either go to private school, but they pay it for themselves, or they go to charter school, which we pay for. So we lose that money. So that kid leaves, and I've said this before, you have 10 kids leave the school, in a grade level, to go to charter school, and we're paying the town portion of that tuition. The state money that used to come to us to help educate that kid here, that goes to the charter school as well as the town's portion. So you're still paying for their tuition, which is kind of like a private school. They don't have the same mandates that the rest of the public schools do, so kids go over there. But those kids leave, the money leaves, but we don't make, we don't save money when those kids leave. When 10 kids leave, you can't lay off a teacher. Yeah, if we had 20 kids leave in a, in a grade level, then you could lay off a teacher, I guess. But you're still not saving the amount of money that you lose when they leave. So it's tough, and it, the cuts that, my taxes are going to go up. I mean, when I moved here in 2000, my taxes were about $3,500 a year. Now it's approaching 10. If all of this passes, I think mine are going to be around 11. So I mean, mine's going up again. And it's horrible. My kids don't play hockey anymore, so I can afford the tax increase, but, but not everybody can. You know, it's going to be, it's going to be pretty rough for a lot of our neighbors. So this is going to be a tough year. I've always stood at town meeting and just said, we have to support schools, have to support schools. This is a tough budget, and next year could be just as bad. And we may have to do that override, and it's going to get ugly. So, sorry, that's it. That was a long speech.
Fine, you had a captive audience.
Tim Lewis, again, if we're looking for positives in a negative situation, there are some positives specifically coming through our central office. We have some talented people who work in there, one being our new special education director. And she's looking in very creative ways and coming up with solutions to bring down the cost of some of the special education. And she's doing, and those reductions aren't going to hurt the care, concern, and education of our kids. So the more creative we can get with our school committee, our central office folks, and of course, the teachers on the ground in collaboration with the administrators, we can avoid some of the difficulties moving forward. So I just think it was important to share that despite some challenges, there are positives with some of our leaders and of course, with our teachers in the classroom. So thank you.
Okay. You guys are already adjourned, so. They can do, I mean, you can adjourn on camera if you'd like, but.
You want to adjourn the Kingston School Committee?
All right. Tricia?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
And Timothy Z, yes.
Okay. Before we move on to the rest of our agenda, I'm going to give everybody a five-minute recess. Those of you who'd like to stay for our meeting are more than welcome. We like having you here, so. But otherwise, you're free to leave. We'll be back in about five minutes. We're back. Okay, so that was a long five minutes. Since we're taking things all sorts of, in an all sorts of random order, we're going to jump to number seven on our appointments, which is consideration for a new application for motor vehicle license, sorry, motor vehicle class one license from Motor World Sports Corporation. The application was reviewed by departments. The only department head that didn't sign off yet was the conservation agent. They are working on some questions related to where the parking lot is and where the wetland is. So I know that the Conservation Commission is looking at that. So that's the only signature that's not completed on that, which the applicant is aware of, I'm sure. The workers' compensation insurance form, I noticed, wasn't filled out. I followed up. It's not applicable to this business. And there was something else, Tricia. Liability insurance. So the, I guess the most, if this, if the board wants to proceed, and he's welcome to come and introduce himself, but if the board wants to proceed with granting the license, I would just ask it be contingent upon the conservation agent's signature. I'm not saying the Conservation Commission's concerns will be completely addressed, but at least if we can say the conservation agent signs off, as well as contingent upon receipt of the liability insurance. Those are the two concerns I had. So I don't know if you want to introduce yourself and introduce what the business is and.
The only thing I just wanted to say is I'm going to recuse myself, just because I know the owners of the property and, so. Yeah.
I know that was a lot. Hello, everybody. I'm Michael Coward. I'm the owner of.
For coming to our budget hearing and.
That was quite a lot. I know you guys just went through it all. My name is Michael Coward. I'm the owner of Motor World Power Sports Corporation. Motor World Power Sports is a golf cart dealer. So I'm here on behalf of Motor World Power Sports today for a class one deal's license. And I kind of wanted to give the board some information to consider, obviously, upon this. So as you guys may or may not know, for our class of business, we are required to go through the planning board and the zoning board. We were conditionally approved between both of those departments, four to zero and five to zero. And now we have came to the selectments for our class one deal license. Just a little bit of background about the golf cart industry and kind of what that entails and what the class one deal license is needed for, I'd like to explain to you guys. So within golf carts, there's two type of things you kind of have to factor in. There's a serial number and a VIN number. A serial number is treated as a typical item that you'd sell on a shelf, as anything else, just used for stocking inventory. A VIN number now comes with a title. That's what goes for your car or vehicles, is what you guys would know for. In the golf cart industry, that's considered an LSV, low speed vehicle, as the police would understand. That is where our class one deal comes into place. When we assign a golf cart to one of our customers, they either get one of which things, a certificate of origin or a title. That is contingent upon us receiving our deal's license. We are legally obligated to operate business now from the zoning board and planning board. So we are able to give our customers our certificate of origin, but we are unable to give them their title, which they would allow them to register their vehicle, without our class one deal license. I want you guys to consider that today, and also the fact of that we do rent 56 Main Street, the property we're speaking about today. We are not owners of 56 Main Street. So any previous conservation problems or things that possibly have happened is really not Motor World Power Sports's concern, or nothing we have had been a part of. It was long, long before us, and we did not want to take any consequence to that situation. And whatever hearing is done tonight, it doesn't decide over the factor if we can operate business or not, just kind of makes it harder for us to not give our customers a title, makes them very unsatisfied, and makes it hard to operate a business, of course, and kills the success of our business.
Right, understood. And when I say I would like to see the motion contingent upon the signature, that's why I wasn't saying contingent upon the Conservation Commission's approval related to their wetlands concerns. So the conservation agent could sign off on the form that we, we give them on, when they review these types of things. He can sign off knowing that the owners are working toward solving the issue. He's back from vacation tomorrow, so he can take a look at that. And it's more, it's sort of a formality, but I just want to make sure that all of our departments are like, yes, this works, we understand, we're on board. And I'm not saying their concerns with the wetland will be resolved by tomorrow, but the conservation agent's concerns may be resolved because they're already in front of Conservation Commission. So he might be able to sign off sooner than they resolve that issue. One question I had was related to the parking lot, though. If they did have a concern, the Conservation Commission, and altered the parking lot in some way, would that impact your ability to do business?
No, so that does actually, does not have anything to do with us at all. There is actually additional offices there that the owners do occupy.
Okay.
And that's kind of their space of things. We really do occupy the front of the building.
Okay.
And the rear of the property, we do occupy the garage. That is not that back parking lot.
Okay, excellent.
The required parking spaces is not nothing that we need volume-based wise, it's just the general requirements of Kingston of one parking spot for every 250 square feet. It's actually, we don't need anything close to that. But for the space required, that's what is required of Kingston, Massachusetts.
Understood. Okay, that helps. And Jason, did you want to speak to this at all? Sure.
So Jason, so the community development. So I've worked with the gentleman here at Motorsports for quite a while over this location. We have, you know, gone through the planning department for site plan review. We've also gone to the zoning board of appeals for a special permit. Both of those have been granted. The special permit from the zoning board of appeals has within it a condition that says that if the site plan changes as a result of some conservation-related issues, the applicant must return and go over that site plan over again. So we, we already have built into some of the existing permits currently some belt suspenders, so that if there is conservation-related issues, the owner of the property would be obliged to make those corrections and then come back to those, those two boards, site plan, as well as the use board, the zoning board of appeals. So in this case, in my opinion, personally, in my opinion, the applicant is not the owner's. The applicant is not related to the conditions associated with the conservation's concerns. And that in no way is there any authority from the Conservation Commission to tell Motorsports that there's something directly related with conservation that would prohibit a license for issuing, in this case, titles to a power dealer. I'd implore the board to try and approve this. We need revenue in the town. We need businesses in the town.
So I'll withdraw my concern on that. So we typically see the signatures completely filled out, so I guess that was my hesitation. What you said is, makes complete sense. And it also, I can see why the conservation agent wouldn't be able to sign off because of his concerns, but what you're stating completely makes sense to me.
So that's all. I just want to point out the sort of scenario that unfolds. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Yep. So I would, I would withdraw that condition request on the motion, based on the feedback from the community development director.
Can I ask a quick question? Would, is the conservation going to affect anything regarding your business to be able to have a successful business there?
No, nothing at all.
Okay. I just, that's great. I just want to make sure you're going to be able to have a successful business there. I'm very excited to have some.
I will speak on one thing. So one thing that does really depend on us having a successful business is the ability for us to authorize titles, because that is where the market is. And that's, we are, I'll kind of elaborate a little bit. We're the first evolution dealer in Massachusetts. That's kind of the one of the biggest upcoming golf cart brands there is, and they're really, really big in Florida, and we're looking to take that to Massachusetts. We brought that to Kingston, which is really beneficial to Kingston, of course. So we'd love to see that be able to happen.
So just for, just for a point of clarification, we have a recommendation in our packet here from the town administrator suggesting that we may want to table the license until we have a final determination. But based on the feedback from the community development director. But based on the feedback from the Community Development Director, would you withdraw that recommendation? Okay, all right, then yes. I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the motor vehicle class one license for Motor World Sports Corp. effective immediately through December 31st, 2024.
Contingent, hold on, sorry, contingent upon receipt of the liability insurance certificate?
Yes.
Still seconded.
All right, sorry. All those in favor?
Aye.
So that is a four, zero, one, right? Or is it just four, zero, zero? He's over there. Okay, four, zero, one.
Oh, that's why he's not there. Okay.
Thank you guys so much.
Congratulations.
Good luck. See you guys. Thank you.
Great job. Commerce, commerce, commerce in the town. Commerce.
All right, moving to my wage and personnel joint meeting here, which was.
How you feeling?
Number three, number three on our agenda. This is why I don't set times, because I really don't know what's going to happen.
Okay. Jim Sewell, the chairman of the Wage and Personnel Committee, I'd like to call the Wage and Personnel Committee to order. Our members are here, and so I'd like to call our meeting to order, since we're meeting with the selectmen. Jennifer is online, so she is, okay, thank you, Tricia. So, basically, our purpose is to present the Article 24 to the select board, to, which will be our presentation at the town meeting. My understanding is that it was voted favorably by the Finance Committee, six, zero. And in the Wage and Personnel Board, it was voted three, zero. The, we're just looking for your recommendations. So if you want, I can read Article 24, or if you guys have looked at it in the packet, I'll just take questions and go forward. So it's up to you.
Do you want, just for the benefit of those watching, our fans at home?
Yep. So, Article 24.
Cover the main changes. That'd be great.
Basically, what Article 24 is, is the yearly wage and personnel bylaw amendment that cleans up the bylaws for our wage and personnel employees in the town. And they're the employees that are not in the unions, okay? And our proviso for our board is to treat them equitably and fairly, as it relates to how the unions are treated. I have to commend Tina Betty, our human resources officer, to, for her help to make sure that we align our bylaws with what happens with the unions and also with Keith. So they're at our meetings quite a bit, and we do a lot of cleanup. So the first thing we are doing is, and I'm just gonna go right down the list. It's in your packet. In Section 7, under compensation, we are providing a five to seven percent increase for promotion or reclass without board authorization. So typically, what happens in the bylaw is if there's a promotion in the town, somebody being promoted from one position up to another, they automatically, by bylaw, get a five percent increase. Talking with Keith and with Tina, we want to give them tools in the toolbox, like I heard you guys talk earlier. So we've allowed them to go to five to seven percent increases, okay, versus just a straight five in the bylaw. Again, it's a cleanup for that purpose. Sick leave, it's to reflect the wording that's found in the KTEU contract. Again, fair and equitable is what we try to do. The next item, personnel appeals, to provide a grievance procedure for wage and personnel employees. There's a grievance procedure in the union contracts. There was none for the wage and personnel people. Or rather, I shouldn't say there was none. It was very limited. We further defined it. And again, that copy is in the bylaw, giving the wage and personnel people options, with the final option, of course, being the select board. Okay? The section number four, miscellaneous provisions, is to reflect current practices. There's little nuances in the bylaw that was customarily done and so forth, and we just cleaned those up, is all that was. Number five, to change the office administrator water full-time to an exempt position, to change the grade of the wastewater superintendent full-time exempt from 12 to 13. And number three, to provide the position of water superintendent, wastewater superintendent, a stipend equal to what is negotiated in the KTEU contract for each professional license required for the position or by the state to reflect current practice. So those two positions have to have certain license requirements in the state to hold those positions. And in the KTEU contract, those are stipend. We have stipend them for the wastewater and the water superintendent. The change in the grade of the wastewater superintendent was presented by the sewer board to us. We looked at the wage and compensation study that was done by the town. I think that was two years ago? Last year? And we looked at the grading that was done by the organization Gov HR. And we looked at it, they looked at it, we got a recommendation back from the sewer commission, and we came to a decision, actually from a recommendation from the town administrator. So. Last, next item, which was done, was to provide a three and a half percent cost of living adjustment for all positions. That, again, is what's done in the union contracts. To us, you have admins in the unions. You have admins also, for instance, in wage and personnel. We are giving them the same increase that was done for the unions, okay? Schedule C-3 is to provide a three and a half cost of living adjustment for all positions that are in Schedule C-3, except entry-level counselor instructor position in the rec. department. That is a recommendation by the recreation director, and we took that as a recommendation. Schedule D is, again, to provide a three and a half percent cost of living adjustment for all positions. And then we updated the table of contents to reflect all our changes. So basically, the big thing in there is the three and a half percent. There is a memo from Carol that, Keith, I'm not sure if it's in their packet, that talks about what the numbers are for that. It's in the warrant, okay?
It's in the warrant already, yep.
If there's any questions on that memo, you guys can see what the three and a half percent reflects in terms of impact to the budget.
Any questions or concerns? And as Jim mentioned earlier, Finance Committee supported the six, zero, zero. And I'm, it doesn't, oh, it does say, three, zero, zero from the wage and personnel board. Any questions?
Any comments from Wage and Personnel?
I move the Board of Selectmen to approve the wage and personnel bylaw recommended by the Wage and Personnel Committee. Further, I move the board vote to favorable action Article 24 wage and personnel bylaw to the annual town meeting warrant.
Second.
Oh, I beat you.
It's competition.
Sorry, so was this, so it's, we're doing three things with this vote. We are approving the recommended bylaw changes, moving it to the warrant, and recommending it, recommending favorable action. Okay. That's fine. I just want to make sure we were clear that that's three things we're doing all in one vote. Okay.
It's a threefer.
Any questions on that? We're good? Everybody knows what we're doing? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I would like to get a motion to close the Wage and Personnel meeting. For the record, Lorraine has made a motion to adjourn the Wage and Personnel meeting at 8:15. Can I get a second? Darlene has seconded the motion. Can I, I'll call the roll. Darlene? Yes, in the affirmative. Lorraine?
Yes.
Yes, in the affirmative. And Jim, yes, in the affirmative.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
I don't know what we should do now. Should we go back to the beginning? Fire chief contact? He's probably gonna wait it out anyway, but yeah, sure.
Did we want to put that off another couple of weeks?
Sorry. Eric wanted to know if we should put the fire chief's contract off a couple more weeks. All right, so that was, where am I in here? I will find it. It's number six. Number six. Yes, all right. So. Okay, our board has successfully negotiated a renewal of Fire Chief Mark Douglas's contract. So the contract and accompanying memo were included in our meeting materials for this evening's meeting. Does anyone have any questions related to the contract? Any concerns? No. Okay. It is, just for the public's knowledge, it is a five-year contract, so.
I move the board to approve the employment contract between the town of Kingston and Fire Chief Mark Douglas as presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Five, zero, zero. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, chief.
So those probably documents you need to sign. Okay, now back to the beginning, shall we, and just get through this thing? All right, so, these are gonna, some of these will be fast. So our first appointment was a request from Tammy Herschel to hold Ragnar Relay through several streets in Kingston in the early hours of Saturday, May 18th, which is also Election Day. For those unfamiliar with the event, the Ragnar Relay is a 200-mile-long-distance-running relay race proposed to start in Groton on May 17th and in Boston on May 18th. The organizers anticipate there'll be about 120 teams of 12 individuals, so less than 1,200 participants, with 120 or less runners spread over 30 to 50 miles of course at any given time. Teams will take turns running relay-style to complete the course, picking up a runner and dropping off the next runner at each of the 36 exchange points. So they are proposing that participants would be in Kingston somewhere between 3:30 in the morning and 11:30 in the morning, using Silver Lake High School as the 24th exchange point with runners alongside of Pembroke Street, Winter Street, Summer Street, I believe, if I'm remembering the map correctly. I don't think so, no. And they're not closing streets. They'll be on the sidewalk, I believe, or the side of the road, for roads that don't have sidewalks. So it was, the request was reviewed by the fire and police chiefs, I hope. Yes, okay. And as well as the superintendents of streets, trees, and parks. And their recommendations are included within the draft motion for our consideration. So one question that I had was the DOT notification document requires signatures from the local police and fire departments and our boards and the state police. Does that happen after we approve the event?
Theirs, their chiefs have signed it.
Okay, great, perfect. Okay, excellent. All right.
I move the Board of Selectmen to approve the request from Amber Sadler to hold the Ragnar Relay event on May 18th, 2024.
Sorry, it's Tammy Herschel.
Oh, that's a, I'll accept that friendly amendment. Plan presented with the following conditions. Ragnar Relay successfully acquires permission to utilize the Silver Lake School District campus as an exchange point. Ragnar Relay contacts the Kingston Police Department for the scheduling of detail officers.
Second.
Ooh, that was close.
I'll give it to her.
Tyler, all right. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, so it's five, zero, zero. Great. All right, the next item is a continuation of a public hearing. This is regarding putting a new pole in Maple Street. So we still have outstanding questions from Eversource. I think we were giving them a break, so they didn't have to sit through our budget meeting, so we have.
Yeah, I called and they were kind enough to push their meeting off until May 7th to allow their representatives to attend and try to get Mr. Bazner and I some more complete information on their asks that we, that the board had made.
Okay, great. So we have a request to continue that public hearing until May 7th at 6:00 PM?
I move the Board of Selectmen to continue the public hearing until May 7th, 2024, at 6:00 PM.
Second.
Oh, Sheila, I think she beat you that time. Sheila. All those in favor?
I hesitated.
Aye. All right, five, zero, zero. I know, seriously. All right, so we are all set with wage and personnel. We are all set on the police department request. We are probably in the middle of the finalizing the warrant. We have a few that we haven't voted yet.
There are, so Article 11, revolving funds has not been voted. Article 20, equipment purchase project funding has not been voted. I'd like to have the board, I'd like to add some language to Article 10, the renewable energy, that will allow us to pay the company and the owner of the solar array, his share of, or the cost of the taking down of the turbine. The language we have now in the warrant does not allow for, or isn't broad enough for the repayment of the turbine removal, so.
So we had originally discussed they would get paid through the revenues.
And they are.
Okay.
But there's additional language that's in the warrant you have on your hands that allows for the payment of the reimbursement, excuse me, of the turbine.
So Finance Committee didn't have that to consider, correct? So their seven, zero, zero vote does not include that?
Right.
Okay. Thoughts? We support the change?
Yeah.
So we'll need to, we'll need to, let's see. Move to reconsider Article 10?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so now move favorable action on Article 10 fiscal year 25 renewable energy enterprise fund budget as amended.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So Finance Committee will need to consider that use of free cash. Nope, he's giving a thumbs down. But that, so we'll just have to take their vote off of here, because that's, okay. If they want to vote it on the town meeting floor, they will, right? Revolving funds. Did we need to do that one as well? Article 11?
Article 11, you do, yes.
Okay. And did Finance Committee, I don't recall, did Finance Committee come to a resolution on that change to the 700,000? Was that a five, one?
Article 11.
It was, okay. And the concern there was that the recreation programs are increasing, and there's not any real oversight from the town? So, okay. Any questions, concerns on that? Okay.
I move, do we have to do that?
Yep.
I move favorable action on Article 11 revolving funds.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, that one's all set. Oh, I have a question on Article 12.
20.
I know we already voted it, but Article 12 was the establish a board of health revolving fund. Why wouldn't the board of health be moving that?
They could. We could change that.
It just seems like they should speak to the need, instead of us. Article 12, we have it as for selectmen. I understand we're establishing a fund, but it's for them, so. Okay, 13 we did, 14 we did, we did 15.
20, next one's 20.
20. Oh, yes, of course. Okay, so this was, Article 20 is the fiscal year 25 equipment purchase project funding. So we have a, so 10 different projects. We spoke briefly about them in our last meeting, but we did not vote on any of them.
FinCom approved them all. The FinCom approved all of those.
Correct, with the second getting a five, one, zero, the third getting a four, two, zero, and the ninth getting five, one, zero, otherwise unanimous support.
So I'm against the electronic voting keypads.
Okay.
Same reason I.
So take two, is it, so which one?
Three, number three. Oh, wait. Sorry, yeah.
So two is for checking in, and three is for voting.
So three is the only one I want to remove.
Okay. Anyone else have any that they have reservations on?
Just three.
Just three. Okay. We good? All right, so does someone want to move the others?
I'll move three, because I, do you want me to move the other ones first?
Yeah, let's do the one, two, four, five, six, seven, eight.
I'm favorable action on Article number 20. Sorry about that. I'm so loud. FY '25 equipment purchase project funds for one, two, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Okay, and I recommend favorable action for project number three, $9,985 for electronic voting keypads and supporting materials.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. So before we vote on this, I would just like to take a second to talk about, do you have the sheet of towns that are using electronic voting? You do, okay. So the town, in preparation for this meeting, the town administrator pulled information on surrounding, well, Massachusetts communities.
But if all the other towns jumped off a bridge, would you jump with them?
I'm just saying, it was requested in the last meeting that we have the information available.
Yes, I asked for it, yes, I believe I asked for it.
Yes, and I believe Tyler asked for it, too. I support this. In fact, I've been advocating for it for a while.
All right.
So, it's fine if you're against it. I totally understand that. I've had many people come to me and say they leave town meeting before articles that they think are gonna get them in trouble if they have to hold their card up. I don't want that. I want people to be. I want people to be able to vote what they think is right. We have ballot booths, we don't know how people vote, so it's, what? Oh, so you can be against it, that's totally fine. It is, it makes, it will make town meeting different, I get it. But I think we should at least be talking about it, okay?
So keep in mind, this is the legislative branch.
Understood.
Legislative branches in all levels of government are not anonymous. Voting is. But what we do at town meeting is legislation. It's not executive, it's not voting.
I proudly hold my card up. I have no problem.
That's why I'm saying, I mean, I totally understand why some people would do it, but it's been our form of government for four hundred years. I would, I'm-
Yeah, and I think I echo what Eric is saying, and we don't need to get into the big thing about this, and this will end up in the floor, and people can decide where they want to go with it. But my take on it is that, you know, there's, you're talking with more of like the bullying, the intimidation, the fear of putting yourself out there, and then the other side of it is the accountability of your position. And I think that's kind of, the two arguments, we've all kind of probably heard this back and forth. I would say that if people aren't accountable, especially on boards and committees and stuff like that, too, what they're saying or what they're leading, and then they go and they can just vote under the table, I think it just doesn't allow a lot of transparency in government. I think that's kind of what the whole point is, is transparency in government within that position. It's a lot longer of a conversation, not for tonight. That'd be my take, is that it also could undermine that.
I appreciate that, Tyler, and I understand that concern. I truly do.
I understand the other concern as well, so.
Being often the one no vote on this board, like I, I understand that, you know, people can see how I vote, right? I'm not, people show up at my house, they come talk to me. Like, it's not, I'm out there, but not everybody feels comfortable doing that. And some people live in this town, work in this town, and the way that they vote, unfortunately, could be used against them in their professional lives. And that's the piece that concerns me, so.
Should we?
Should they be, should they have that bullying and pressure? Absolutely not. Should we live in an environment where you can vote something and not have someone treat you differently or poorly? Absolutely. Unfortunately, that's not the world that we live in. It's, it'd be great if that were the way it worked, but unfortunately it doesn't, so. But yeah, we can vote. I think we've had enough of a political conversation.
Yeah, I will say, I mean, the rest of this is going to be on the floor if anybody even wants to put it up at town meeting, so.
That's fine.
We can talk about freedom and liberty and all that fun stuff.
Right, I mean, look at Finance Committee, right? It was four-two. You know, it is an issue that we, as town meeting, need to decide if we want to do it this way. And if we don't, we don't.
Yeah.
That's fine. Joyce, did you have something related to electronic voting? Oh, okay. She's on the phone with Keith. She's smiling. No, maybe, nope. Maybe? Okay, hand out. All right. All right, so we have a motion, we have a second. Sheila, did you want to say anything about that, the twenty-four day?
I am in their favor of these, so I, I'm with you, Kim. I just, being that I've been at many, many a town meeting with a hundred people for thirty-five thousand hours, I mean, we are very transparent, I have to say.
We are a very transparent group, and we have been very well at doing one-days, but that doesn't always mean it's going to always be that way. And I think, as I stare at Paul, who was a, who was a counter half the time, sometimes you see, I just feel as though there are some people that tend to be, once they see it, they, there's a lot of options when that comes to that. And I think people need to have a free rein of being able to, to make their vote of what they want to be, so. So yes.
All right, so we have a motion, we have a second. And all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay, so it's a three-two.
I didn't know how to vote opposed. I haven't voted opposed before. I'm like, what did we say? Me?
I can help you. I do that a lot. All right.
You hit the button, you hit the electric button.
That's why you do it. I'll still hold my card up, Tyler. Even with the buttons, I'll still hold my card up. All right, we did Sampson Fund. Where are we going next, Keith? Where are we going next? We just did twenty.
We just did twenty.
Hey, pay attention. Wait, we're all done?
The only thing I think you have to do tonight if you want to is, I don't think you've done Article thirty-four, which is the accessory dwelling units.
I actually wanted to ask about something else, too. So can we go to, actually to twenty-five for a second?
Yep.
So twenty-five, Finance Committee voted zero-five-one. We voted five-zero-zero. We also just approved the idea, at least recommending the idea of using thirty-five thousand in free cash for the renewable energy turbine issue. So I guess, given those two pieces of information, I move to reconsider Article twenty-five.
And I will second this.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Was that five?
No.
No, okay. Opposed? We're just moving to reconsider.
Yeah, then yes, yes.
Okay, five-zero-zero. Okay, so my question, I guess, is given Finance Committee's reservations and their discussion at their meeting, do we support this for thirty-five thousand of free cash for the age dementia survey?
Do we have more info on why, I didn't watch it, why they voted against it?
I, do you want to speak to that? No, he doesn't.
So I, I mean, just very briefly, I think the FinCom was concerned about using additional free cash for this particular type of program.
I got it.
There was also concern that the survey is the first piece of it. It creates a plan, and then from that will also create more costs, too. Maybe needs that need to be addressed, that is very likely, but there was concern about ongoing costs and they didn't, I don't think they wanted to spend money on a survey, is the impression I got.
The reason that I supported it to begin with is I think, my understanding of this is this is going to make, obviously, dementia is hitting everybody, not just the people who have dementia, but family members. So it's hitting our generation as our parents' age. It's, you know, hitting grandchildren, so it's hitting every age. That's why I felt, in general, in favor of it. You know, the survey was just the initial piece. It doesn't mean that I'm going to support whatever the next phase could potentially be. So.
Okay. Any other comments or thoughts?
I think it's an area we can revisit. I mean, I'm going to reconsider my vote, I mean, to a no, I think we can revisit it at a later date, next, next spring.
Potentially postpone it?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm kind of feeling the same way myself. It's really tough, and I really feel dementia is huge. I, as a person who goes, who's had, who have family members like this, I really want to be a dementia family in our town, and I think that she's been wonderful about doing it. I don't want to say it's not the fact that, it's just, tonight, I'm, I can't sit here and do this. I can't. Like, we're really hurting, and I don't want to sit here and, and, like we said, you have to make tough cuts. I, this is one that I just feel like we could bring it another time.
Don, anything to add?
No.
Okay. All right, so does someone want to make a motion to move favorable action on Article twenty-five?
It would probably be, oh, yeah.
So moved.
Okay, so Don making the motion, is there a second?
Second.
All right. All those in favor?
This is in favorable action, correct?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay. I'm changing my vote, too.
All those opposed? Nay.
Nay.
Okay.
You guys, it made sense what you were saying about postponing this.
Okay.
Just postpone, you know?
All right, will you, Keith, will you let them know that the Council on Aging Advisory Board, they may want to, they may want to consider not moving it, but we're closing the warrant tonight, so it stays, right? Okay, and you said we had another one further on?
Thirty-four.
Not done?
Thirty-four.
Thirty-four. Okay, yes, accessory dwelling units.
Oh, yes, so I move, okay.
I move favorable action.
You don't want to talk about it? Okay, that's fine.
Oh, no, we can talk about it, because like, it's not in favor of it, so I'm ready.
It doesn't matter to me. I'm in favor of it, too, so.
I need four of them for my backyard.
And I will say that I do have one, so I'm not going to, I'm not going to knock. I have one, so.
Oh, jeez.
I know. I don't know if I should vote on it. Do you guys feel comfortable having me? I have one, so.
No, it's fine. This is specifically, it's amending the bylaw, so.
I, I move favorable action on Article thirty-four, amending bylaws in a while, one accessory housing unit to a single-family dwelling in certain circumstances.
Second.
All right. Any questions for Keith related to this? Planning board's supported at six-zero-zero. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great.
I wanted to know affordable housing.
So, hold that on the floor and say two of the housing units.
We, we, we have a letter coming to, at, 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 um, for Tommy.
Okay, great. Is that it?
Jean, I did it. I said-
We're done?
No. Well, we're done the warrant, yes.
That's what I meant.
So, just so the boards are aware, I've made the changes in the warrant. Because we have historically preserved the warrant in an eight-and-a-half-by-fourteen paper, I've got to change the setup for the town clerk, but Trish has the last page of the warrant. If the board is comfortable signing it tonight, we've got multiple copies that you can sign, and we'll just add that to the, our-
Electronic warrants would be fabulous.
Except, well, you might agree that, feel that way, but two people may not.
Nice. Touche, touche.
All right. Okay, so we don't close the warrant until later, correct?
The warrant we posted tomorrow.
Okay, we don't close it, no one. I meant in the agenda.
No, you got to close the warrant, yeah.
That's number four. Want to just do it while we're here? We're thinking about the warrant, let's just close it. All right. So, sorry, Tricia, your minutes, I apologize. We are jumping all over the agenda. We're moving to additional item number four. Close town meeting warrant and authorize town clerk to post.
I move the Board of Selectmen close the twenty-twenty-four annual town meeting warrant.
Second.
What's the matter?
Oh, we're not using the "and authorize town clerk to post."
It has a second motion on my paper.
Oh, it's two motions, yeah.
Oh, I, okay.
That's right, so what was the second?
No, we could just do.
I think it was Eric.
Sorry.
Okay. All those in favor?
I do.
Aye.
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 Okay, five-zero-zero.
It's going to be the same people again, okay?
Go ahead.
I move the Board of Selectmen close the unauthorized the town clerk to post the May eleventh, twenty-twenty-four annual town meeting warrant.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, excellent. We did.
To undo number three?
Five. Sorry, I was just looking, we already did five, two.
Yep.
All right, great. Okay, so moving back to, let's just do the one-day liquor licenses, and then we'll move to Mr. Bazler. All right, so we have a request from Independent Fermentation Brewing LLC requesting a one-day beer and wine liquor license for a food truck and artisan fest, also on May eighteenth. This is going to be a very busy day in Kingston. At the Kingston Collection, we received all the required paperwork, and everything was in our packet. The police and fire chief have reviewed the request and had no objections, as far as I could tell. So unless there are any comments or questions, I will entertain a motion.
I move to approve the request from Independent Fermentation Brewing LLC. Is requesting a one-day beer and wine liquor license for a food truck and artisan fest on May eighteenth, twenty-twenty-four at Kingston Collection from nine a.m. to three P.M.
Second.
Can I just say real quickly that I wish that our, that our meeting was actually at the Kingston Collection now, so we could go to this after the town meeting?
Or they could, yeah, they could come.
Yeah.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Great, excellent. Additional item number one, so the Superintendent of Streets, Trees and Parks has submitted his recommendation that the fees for the transfer station remain the same as last year. So looking back, I asked him to give me some data on the prior year's fees. So looking back at the last ten years, the fees have increased four times, but this year he's not recommending an increase because, well. This year he's not recommending, you heard all of that, right? Okay.
Yep.
This year he's not recommending an increase because we increased forty dollars. So it's, we're now at two hundred and forty.
So, so going forward, I think probably every other year, discuss our increase. And just to clarify, one thing you said at open forum, is that this year, June first is on a Saturday, so.
Oh, I'll correct that.
Although the stickers will be on sale June third.
June?
So I don't want anybody going down to the Highway Department to get their plans, thinking they're going to get their stickers.
Got it.
So June first, plants at the Highway Department for the agricultural fair stuff. June third, Monday, we'll see everybody starting at seven o'clock to purchase their new transfer station stickers. And we have a special handout this year, different than the bags we've done in the past. It is a multi-purpose bottle opener. The chairman and the recycling committee, the recycling committee voted in favor of buying these things, so. And this year we got three thousand of them, instead of just, instead of a thousand, so the first three thousand people to come down and get your transfer station stickers will get one of the handouts.
Hey, I love that rubber spatula thing that you gave us one year.
We try to get spatules again.
And the bag, I like it. Okay, any questions or comments, concerns about the keeping the fee the same recommendation? No?
I move the Board of Selectmen accept the recommendation from the Superintendent of Streets, Trees and Parks as presented and listed above.
In our meeting packet. No one can see what's above.
I don't accept the friendly amendment.
Is there a second?
This is an aggressive board.
All those in favor?
Aye.
It gets worse though.
Thank you so much. This board is so bad, we need a police officer here.
Seriously. All right.
Not only an officer, but the chief.
Right.
All right, so with the impending retirement of Kingston's IT manager, the town administrator researched outsourcing responsibilities of that position after consulting with the current IT manager, interviewing two firms interested in contracting with the town. The town administration is recommending we engage with MX Consulting Services Incorporated at a cost of one hundred and eleven thousand dollars annually, which is less than the wages and benefits of the current IT manager. That said, this was included in the budget that Finance Committee
Yes.
looked at and approved, and they know about this change. So just want to make sure that that's clear, that this isn't, this isn't a surprise.
Yep.
So MX Consulting will provide twenty-four-seven remote coverage, along with an MX employee being onsite eight hours per week. If we support this contract, MX will provide IT support to the townhouse, water and sewer departments, recreation, library, and fire department. We have used MX Consulting recently to assist the IT manager with a variety of network-related projects and upgrades, including the installation of the fiber network, including configuration of the network hardware in all town buildings to the network.
Yes, they've done a great job for us, and we're excited to bring them on in a expanded role.
Okay. Any questions on that recommendation?
I move the Board of Selectmen approve a one-year contract for IT support services for the FY twenty-five fiscal year.
Second.
There was discussion about a longer-term contract, but I think we wanted to see how it goes, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, there was no, there was no cost savings for doing multiple years. Feel very confident that MX will do a great job for us. But just felt it was probably more appropriate to have a one-year contract to start.
Mm-hmm, okay.
This gives us flexibility.
Yep.
Okay. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, five-zero-zero, great. Next thing, we received a request from the wastewater superintendent requesting our board deem their two thousand six F-three-fifty as surplus. What, is it for, has it already been replaced, Keith, do you know?
Yeah, I believe that that, that truck was ordered as part of the fiscal twenty-four budget. And this truck is being replaced and brought to auction, and because it's no longer needed and/or roadworthy, fair enough?
Okay.
I move the Board of Selectmen declare the two thousand six F-three-fifty from the wastewater department as surplus and approve this to go to auction.
Second.
Sheila Beechey. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Excellent. All right, did those. And now we have a renewal. We have a number of renewals for our consideration as part of the annual April bowling and billiards licenses. The list of licenses that are requesting renewal were included in our meeting materials. I didn't have any questions or concerns. I don't know if anyone else did. No? No? Okay.
I move the Board of Selectmen approve the annual licenses as printed in the meeting packet.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, five-zero-zero. And, yes. So the minutes weren't in there on Friday, are they in there now? I didn't get a chance to look at them. So let's, can we, does anyone mind if we skip minutes?
I updated the agenda today on the new.
Oh, okay.
New packets, we'll do it.
Oh, no minutes, excellent. Skipping minutes that don't exist. Excellent. So town administrator, report?
So I don't have a lot to report. I'm thankful that the budget process is nearing its end, and thank the board for, for your support over the last several months. And I think the department heads and I have tried to work as well as we could together to try to bring something forward that met the goals of everybody and was affordable. I certainly understand and respect the concerns that were raised tonight about next year. I don't think it's a, I think it's, it's something we need to be aware of moving forward and sympathetic to that. The other item that kind of came across quickly last week that I wasn't aware of until last week was there's a white Ford Explorer in the parking lot that's a town vehicle. It's owned by the sewer department. It's, I don't have a year on it. Uh, it's owned by the Sewer Department, it's, uh, I don't have a year on it, we were supposed to have, have dedic- have brought this, it's a two thousand and six. It was supposed to have been brought tonight for a request by the Sewer Commission to deem it surplus, uh, but we couldn't get the information together in time to bring it to the board tonight. That being said, the Sewer Commission intends to, uh, to sell that for the same reason they're asking to sell the other one, it's not roadworthy, it's not reliable, it's not safe to drive. Um, that is the only vehicle that, that the townhouse has, uh, to use for town staff to do town business. I checked with the police chief thinking, last week, thinking perhaps, uh, our soon-to-be-retired Lieutenant Ford Taurus may be something we could look at, and, uh, he described the condition of that vehicle, and I suspect that will be going, coming to the board potentially for a surplus as well. Uh, so, I talked to Carol, uh, our Finance Director, and I also spoke to Jason Silva, uh, the, um, revolving fund for the Building Department has funding in there, uh, to allow for the purchase of another vehicle, or a vehicle for the, the building inspector. He has a vehicle now, um, that's a few years old, it's a Ford Explorer, I believe, it's not a Ford Explorer. It's a, it's a Buick SUV, um, that would be turn, that would be, that would be passed down to the townhouse for any townhouse employee to use for town business, so they don't have to use their own car. Um, it's, the, the, the funding is allowable, the, the, this particular request is allowable, it's within the spending threshold. I, I, I would have liked to have brought it through the capital improvement process, but because of the timing of it all, I just can't. Uh, so, I, I'd like to just make the board aware that, that, um, I'd like to move forward with, uh, the acquisition of, of a new vehicle for the Building Commissioner, um, through, with funding source being the, uh, building revol- building inspection revolving fund, and, uh, the vehicle he's using now, uh, will be turned over and used as a, uh, a vehicle for town staff to, to go out and do town business. Just want to make you aware of that. And last but not least, I, I, um, um, notified yesterday that, uh, Lieutenant Tom Kelly has, is be, is retiring, I think everybody knew he would be in the near future, I think he's set, set his date for, um, the fifteenth, uh, I'm sorry, the thirteenth of May. Um, Lieutenant Kelly has been a police officer in Kingston for, uh, thirty-seven plus years.
Amazing person.
He is, uh, salt of the earth, uh, a, a former member of the Mass.
Seven, seven-two military police company, National Guard.
National Guard, seven, seven-two, uh, military police company, I apologize, actually have worse writing than I do, which is hard to believe. Um, and, uh, you know, he was the acting police chief, uh, while we were in search of, of Chief Holmes, and, and he, uh, certainly sacrificed a great deal for this community, uh, will have an opportunity, if he's willing to come to the May seventh meeting to recognize him, but I just want to. I, 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 I don't know what you're making that face for, but I, I would, I, I just wanna, I, I just wanted to make sure the board's aware that a very well-known, very well-respected, uh, servant of this community is retiring after thirty-seven, uh, very, very impressive years of service, and thank him for his service.
We can get the chief to get one.
Can we also say something at town meeting?
We certainly can.
Since it's two days before his.
Yeah.
Maybe he can work the detail.
Might be a different, might be a slightly different crowd, maybe a few more people there.
I'm sure.
Hopefully.
All right, thank you.
So I, beyond that, uh, I really don't have any, I'm happy to answer any questions anybody has. The boat ramp is moving forward, I think the, the cement ramp is in place, um, I don't know it'll be done by May first, but, um, bids are out right now, uh, for the, um, delivery of, uh, cement for the, for the, uh, parking lot. There's also a bid out for some, for a company to spread said cement in the parking lot, uh, based on the specs that were provided to us, so, uh, it will be open certainly, I think, by the time that boating season goes into.
Isn't it May first? Doesn't boating season start by first?
Uh, the sign actually at the Idina has been changed, I believe, to May fifteenth.
Okay.
So, to give it, uh, some time to be able to get the parking lot finished.
Okay, so, so boaters need to know that.
Yeah, and I mean, just because, yeah, I mean, just because it's in, in, you know, well, I think by the, by next meeting, we'll definitely have a very clear update on it, um, well, I mean, it gets very close, we'll be in May seventh, right, is our next meeting?
May seventh, yeah.
Yeah, um, so, they'll be able to start putting the mains in, in the docks, um, this next week coming up, um, or the following, no, yeah, next week, um, and then, from there, they'll start putting mornings in, get everything cleared up, but, um, the sign will announce it's fifteenth, and I think that's still the target date for being able to get things rolling.
Okay, and we're communicating with the people who we know that would roll in at May first?
They're putting, yeah, they're putting the word out through the signage and, and things like that, um.
We could, maybe we can post something on the website, too?
Absolutely.
Okay, that would be great.
Yeah, I think, um, by next, I mean, next meeting we'll definitely have a clear update on, on timelines as well.
Any other updates?
Nothing, nothing tonight, thank you.
No, no questions, okay. Any Selectmen comments?
Yeah, so. I just, to go off the, uh, I did have some, um, uh, there's two things, I, um, that, um, over near the exit, old exit eight, which is, um, I have had some people ask about getting a, another assessment of the light there, because I guess going, going there has been, I guess, has been some accidents, but also.
Is it getting stuck?
Like, it's just been, like, very, I guess, there's been a lot of issues going on, there, there's no sidewalks, even though, you know, it's near the mall, but, um, so I didn't know if we had, I, I have one, like, recently.
Like an intersection?
So, I would just ask, and I apologize for being the new guy, what is the exit number now?
So it's Smith Lane.
Smith Lane.
Yeah, it's the Smith Lane.
Seventeen?
Eighteen.
Eighteen, it's my exit, I don't know what it is, yeah, it's not my exit.
It's exit eight.
It's exit eight, yeah.
As you know.
Yes, it's exit eight.
It's the mall exit, just because, um, there is, there, I know that there, that there's the, um, Amazon trucks, but everything, it just, um, I've been asked because, um, there's been some issues, so I just wanted to see what we're thinking.
So, if we don't have a, if we don't have something done, and, and Mr. Bazler may be able to fill us in very nicely.
He's making faces.
Yeah, I spoke with DOT about that in the session two weeks ago, from my understanding, it was the issue with line painting, where people coming up Smith Lane.
Uh-oh, microphone's not on.
And it started taking a right-only.
Yes, that's exactly what it is.
So, I contacted the State Maintenance Department, she stated that when they come out to paint, they'll paint the whole intersection to include that right-turn lane, I'd like to see them make the left-turn lane a left-turn only.
Yes, me too.
And then use the right lane to go straight, but that might take an act of God, but right now, DOT's working on this.
Thank you Paul for that, that's, that's, that's one of the main things is, um, is that issue is, because people are not really following directions.
Right, that's, the main issue up there is they're not paying attention.
So, and I would just encourage people, if you have seen things, like lights malfunctioning, for instance, we had an issue where, um, a light wasn't turning, and was it Brook Street?
That was Brook Street for pedestrian, for bicyclists.
Exactly, so we have, when that happens, reach out to the, the, the Highway Barn.
Please do so.
Streets, Trees and Parks, and let them know, because they don't always know when lights aren't functioning the, the way that they should, so, please let them know.
All righty.
And for all those people new to town, it is seventeen.
I just have one last thing, and I know.
Seventeen, exit seventeen.
I, I just want to think, I want to thank Indian Pond, um, uh, Country Club and our police and fire, and, and the parents who did the prom, the junior prom, it was my daughter's prom, so I just have to give a shout out to, um, to the amazing people, uh, of Kingston Halifax and Plimpton, the parents who came together, and I know Officer Allen was there, he's amazing, and he was there the whole night, God bless him. Um, I was a chaperone, but I wanted to just thank everybody, it was a wonderful event, um, that I think everybody was really excited about, you know, even though Lorraine was there, but I just wanted to give a shout out to, to the committee, and it was really cool to see, and I think, I haven't hea- heard one kid say that they didn't have a good time, so, that's pretty awesome, so, I just wanted to give a shout out, because that's just, it's not through the school, it's through the parents, and so, um, and to a committee, so I just wanted to give a shout out to that, and, um, and bless Officer Allen for being there the whole night, so, he's a great guy.
Great, thank you. Don, did you have anything? No?
I have nothing.
Tyler?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
But you didn't even give Eric a chance, all right, fine, a second tells me what I need to know.
You got a squad of a pen.
I don't have any comments, I talked enough. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, have a great night, our next meeting is May seventh at six PM, and I may not be there, so.
Okay.